Delegate Charlene So.
Morning, Charlene.
Good morning. Barbara O'Keefe, LDA.
Uh, we're still hanging on, waiting for a form.
Okay, thank you. I'll be right here. Okay. Is this your delegate, Halona?
No, there's two other delegates on the line.
Daniel So.
Morning, sir.
Good morning.
Delegate Slater.
Morning, sir.
Morning, I apologize. Uh, this is the first call I've been able to get through and punch the number incorrectly. My service is bad.
Satilla, Vice Chair, I just got on just seconds before you did too. Uh, Mr. Moes, Ms. Martinez, who else from the committee, who else is on?
We have five members total, yourself, Vice Chair, Honorable Paul DeGage Jr., Honorable Pernell Halona, and Honorable Charlene So.
Okay. Let's get down to business then. Um... Let me call the meeting to order for July 8th, the regular committee meeting of the Health Education Human Services, uh, 24th Navajo Nation Council, could we have the roll call?
Morning, sir. Roll call for Health Education Human Services Committee, 24th Navajo Nation Council Regular Meeting via Telecommunications, July 8th, 2020, 10:00 AM. Honorable Paul DeGage Jr.
Delegate Paul DeGage.
Honorable Russell Slater.
Delegate Slater, President.
Honorable Pernell Halona.
Delegate Halona, President.
Honorable Charlene So.
Here.
Honorable Daniel E. So.
Here.
Honorable Edison J. Winika. Was that you, Honorable Winika? Honorable Edison J. Winika. Chair, we have five members at this time constitute the call.
Thank you, um, uh, could I then call on Honorable Pernell Halona to provide us the invocation?
Sure, I sure will, thank you. Good morning, everybody. Hello? Can you, everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Lord Jesus, for this day, this wonderful, beautiful day. Thank you for all the healthy people that are out here still surviving and, and, uh, living through this terrible pandemic that we're going through. Lord, please bless us and give us the strength and wisdom and knowledge to move forward with all the decisions that we have to make today and, and keep all the people safe out there, all the members that are on the House Committee, all of the Navajo Nation Council, all the, uh, Presidents and Vice Presidents of Navajo Nation and all their staff. Keep us all healthy, Lord Jesus, so we can do, uh, the work of you, your, your, your request to help the people. We're your servants here today, Lord, and we ask you to forgive us for all of the sins that we may have made without knowledge, without knowing that have been, been, been made. We also ask you to keep all those people out there that have lost their loved ones and, and comfort their hearts and comfort their souls so they can make it through the day and, and forward on in their life. And we bless all those people that we lost today and in the past to this terrible virus. We ask you to keep all of the people safe on the reservation as well, as well as across the, uh, the United States and all around the world, Lord. We ask for all these blessings, Lord, and thank you for all of you, all of the things that you have already blessed us with and given us, the food, the air, the wind, and this beautiful earth that we live on today. Keep us, keep us safe, Lord, and, and help us to make all these wise decisions and, and hopefully we can get through the day without any, any, any hard feelings with anybody and that everybody understands that we're doing the work of you, your, your servant, Lord. I ask all these blessings in the name of Lord Jesus Christ, amen.
Well, for the other list, uh, Honorable Halona, other committee members, uh, thank you for, um, calling in. I don't know, she, she, the case in the South, we says on, thank you. Uh, he's from Nagi, uh, so, um, by whole Jesus, um, committee members, we had the invocation. Do we have any announcements? For me, um, just, uh, House Committee members and staff, we have a call with the New Mexico Human Services Department regarding the Indian Managed Care Entity, and tomorrow at, uh, 11:00. So, uh, on the invited list is, uh, Honorable Carl Slater, Honorable Mark Freeland, Honorable, uh, Speaker Damon, and myself, and about nine people from the state of New Mexico. The only, I guess, what's really of concern is there's, there's discussions that they will try to delay the implementation for a whole year, and we sure don't need that, we need help now. So, that will be one of the biggest issues on tomorrow's call. The other is, uh, um... The aspects of, um, reopening of the tribal controlled schools and how to coordinate the BIE. We have, uh, um, tribal consultation teleconference tomorrow, um, the ninth, as well as for the public on the 10th. So, but again, you have to call in, get on the call, the, you have three reds, I for myself have a three reds. Um... Um, for that, that's, uh, the announcements I make from the chair. Committee members, do you have any other announcement? There being none, let's go to recognizing the guests and visiting official. All the folks that are on the call, could you give us your name?
This is Laura Hammett with John Hopkins and, uh, Health Command Operations Testing Coordination Team.
Good morning, Isabella Robyn, Staff Writer, Office of Speaker.
Good morning, committee members, this is Barbara O'Keefe, LDA to Delegate Ed Maniazi.
Yadeh, good morning, committee members, this is Dell Yazi with the Navajo Epidemiology Center.
Anybody else?
Good morning, this is Leonora Henderson with Daltech.
Uh, okay, anybody else? Do we have anybody from Department of Defense Education? So, we'll go on to reviewing and adopting the agenda. Uh, tomorrow, Ms. Martinez?
Good morning, everyone. Agenda, the Health Education Human Services Committee, 24th Navajo Nation Council, Regular Meeting by Telecommunications, July 8th, 2020, 10:00 AM, Presiding Honorable Daniel E. So Chairperson, Honorable Carl Russell Slater, Vice Chairperson, place, Telecommunications, Wunder Rock, Navajo Nation, Arizona. One call meeting to order, roll call invocation announcements, two, recognize guests and visiting official, three, review and adopt the agenda, four, review and adopt the journal, five, receiving report. A, update report on reopening, returning schools in the fall. B, update report from Navajo Department of Health on Daltech Senior Centers for Fort Defiance Agency, Chinlea, Western Northern Agency areas, identification of elderly staffing, and PPE, etc. C, report on COVID-19 update by Dr. Jill Jim, Navajo Department of Health, and... Laura Hammett, Doctor, from John Hopkins School of Public Health. Six old business, seven new business, A, legislation 0140-20, B, legislation 0143-20, C, legislation 0151-20, D, other, eight, committee announcements, Chairman, Mr. Chair and members, that agenda's been written to the record.
Committee members. Back to the membership, how do you wish to proceed?
Motion, please, Jenna.
Motion by Honorable Pernell Halona. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Sabisa, uh, we have a second by Honorable Charlene So. Um, discussion on the motion to adopt the agenda. Oh, Yadeh, Satilla, thanks for calling in.
Hello?
Hello? Okay, uh, any discussions, additions, or deletions from the agenda that was written to the record? If not, then, Mr. Moes, hey, can you do the, uh, roll call vote?
Yes, sir. Uh, Honorable Paul DeGage Jr. Honorable Paul DeGage Jr. Honorable Carl Russell Slater. Honorable Carl Russell Slater.
Delegate Slater, Green.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. Honorable Pernell Halona.
Green.
Honorable Charlene So.
Green.
Honorable Edison J. Winika.
Green.
Honorable Paul DeGage Jr. Honorable Paul DeGage Jr. Chair, a vote of four in favor, zero opposed.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Committee members, let the record show, a vote of four in favor, zero opposed, the Chair not voting. Good, good morning, Satilla, Honorable Edison Winika, thank you for joining us on, on this call. We appreciate your, uh, input and your presence, um... So, with that, we go to item four, review and adopt the journal, um, there being none. Um, we'll go, then proceed to receiving, uh, a report. Uh, A, update and report on reopening, uh, returning schools in the fall. Uh, Doctor Patricia Gani and, uh, staff. Patricia Gani, are you on the call? Ms. Martinez, have you heard from, um, Doty on, um, they're coming on to the teleconference meeting?
Um, I sent them an agenda and they were all advised that there's a meeting today, but I have not heard from them today, this morning, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Okay, um... In, in that respect, then, Mr. Martinez, uh, please enlighten the committee how to proceed with, uh... Going on to the balance of the agenda.
Mr. Chair and members, uh, the committee can go on to add the next item on the agenda and, um, they may join the meeting later on, Doty staff. Mr. Chair.
Okay. Rashida, then, uh, I guess, as, uh, Delegate Slater so well puts it, the first call for update on reopening schools in the fall. Second call. Third call. So then now we go to update report from, uh, Navajo Division of Health and on Daltech Senior Centers for all five agencies. Um, Dr. Jill Jim, Leonora Henderson, you have the floor.
Yadeh, good morning, this is Leonora Henderson, um, thank you, Chair, um, members of the committee. I, um, I emailed a report to Martinez, I don't know if you all have received it.
Mr. Chair, that was emailed out to the committee members this morning.
Okay, so I'll just go ahead and go briefly over this report with you all, and if you have any questions, then I can answer thereafter, um, not unless you've already read the report and just have questions for me. I'll, I'll leave that up to you.
Uh, go ahead and give us a summary.
Okay, Chair, okay, so the report that I have is regarding the, um, elderly, the senior center staff and the PPEs that have been received by Daltech's, um, program. So, I'll just go following my report. Number one, the COVID-19 funding, we received, um, Title III and Title VI. Um, we received those back in April and they have gone through the 164 review process. We have received the business unit numbers and we are currently using these funds to purchase food, PPEs, operating and cleaning supplies for all agencies. Right now, we don't have enough general funds, the general fund is just covering mainly the personnel, all the senior center staff. Uh, there's a table, there's a couple of tables in the presentation that I provided. So, the first table is the identification of elders for each agency, the number of registered elders and number of new elders. This data given is starting from March to, I guess, as of yesterday, um... So, the number of meals served by Daltech through this pandemic was 160, 160,445. The number of registered elders are 9,384, and the number of new elders received during this time is 889. I want to add to that, that, um, the, the registered elders that we already have, according to our Title III and New Mexico House Bill 2, we need to re-register these elders, so that is ongoing effective July 1st, so that's our new fiscal year for our state contracts, and we'll, the senior centers are re-registering them. So, this number will eventually go up, but right now, as of right now, these are the only new number of elders that we've received thus far. So, the second table is the staffing of the senior centers, so our, you know, you all know that our staff are considered essential staff, so each senior center consists of a senior center supervisor, a cook, and a driver, and the table breaks it down as to who, how many are working at Central Office within each agency, Chinlea, Crown Point, Fort Defiance, Shiprock, and Tuba. So, the total number of staff right now are 219 that are working. Um, there are 70, 72 centers that are operating, they are serving, they're open, they're not, they are open, but they are not open to the elders. Um, currently, there are six centers that are closed due to possible exposure, and staff are out on leave during this time. Um, I just wanted to, um, indicate or reiterate that due to these centers closing, right now, there are, within Chinlea Agency, um, Salem is closed. Chinlea, um, Senior Center has been asked to move to Mini Farms and they're serving out of Mini Farms due to that, um, the command center requesting, you know, they have that, um, I can't remember what it's called, that, that facility where they house the, the individuals that test positive. That's right there in that Chinlea, um, Senior Center vicinity, and they were asked to move their services to Mini Farms, so they're serving out of Mini Farms. Um, within Crown Point Agency, the centers that had been affected were Pueblo Pantado, Ojo, and Tino, and Church Rock, within Fort Defiance of Sheep Springs, Two Hachi, Indian Wells, St. Michael's, and Lepton, and with Shiprock Agency, there was Newcombe, Red Mesa, Naiji, and Gutiay. Tuba City is Cameron, La Chi, Tuba City, Inscription House, and Denaholtso. Once these, um, centers, um, or the staff become possibly infected, we, um, ask them to leave the centers immediately. Well, they sanitize the centers and then they leave and then they're, they're out for that duration. Once they test negative, then they come back to the center and then they sanitize again, and we all iterate to them that sanitization has to be done on a daily basis, and that, that is what, um, the staff have been doing. And then as far as PPEs, that's, um, table number three. From the beginning, we had very little supplies, but as we moved on into the, um, several months, like, like in April and May, we got more supplies, and to date, I can say that all of our senior centers have adequate supply of gloves, um, homemade masks, disposable masks, safety glasses, face shields, and, as, as far as for protection when they do go out to deliver their food, as well as cleaning supplies that were delivered are the hand sanitizers, disinfectant wipes, Clorox. disinfectant wipes, Clorox, dish soap, um, some agencies got tissue, trash bags, and home delivery to-go containers. Um, donations that have been received for some agencies, they've, they've received sewing supplies, um, fabric to, to sew the masks. And, uh, the last column indicates that there were KN-95 and N-95 masks that were donated from individuals outside of the program. Um. A lot of the, um, supplies that were donated are given to the program whether from the Command Center and NDOH Executive Office, as well as the program, um, the agency themselves. They, they were able to, they had extra funds where they were able to purchase, um, some of the supplies on their own. Um, the senior, the food vendors that we currently work with right now are Blue Malin Meat, Bash's, Farmer's Market and John Brooks. The grocery stores are mainly used for the fresh fruits and the vegetables that are required, um, when they're preparing their meals. Blue Malin Meat supplies more of the bulk items that are more shelf-stable. Uh, and we continue to work with them as we have a contract with them through, uh, December twenty twenty-one. So we have funds available, agencies have their allocation and they are ordering as needed. So, there really should be no issue with food at any center. And even if there is, um, we have funds here with the Command Center that we can rely on. Um, so there really shouldn't be any issue with food out there. Um, we do have a nutritionist. There were just questions that were popping up that I just included in this report so as to just provide the information. We do have a nutritionist with the state of New Mexico. She prepared this menu that they are currently using and it was approved by the former, um, ex- Health Service Administrator back in September of, um, twenty nineteen. It was approved and once it was approved, the agencies implemented it and that's what they should be serving off of right now. Right now, we serve, um, home delivery. We did go back to to-go curbside pickup meal. We did stop the to-go, to-go meals. Um, when the, there was a rise in numbers of the COVID-19 here on Navajo. We did stop that for a while, but we slowly restarted this month and, or last month in June. And it's been going good since then. The numbers have been going back up and the elders are thankful that we are there providing these meals for them. As some of them, this is their only meal. We do provide weakened meals for some of the elders that are in most need. And, um. So, the next thing I want to talk about is the, um, staff exposures and cleaning of the facilities. We follow the CDC guidelines in regards to how to, when the staff have possibly become infected, we, we let them go home. They get tested and self, or quarantined for several days. Or, or the number of days as recommended by CDC, I think it was, which was fourteen days. Um, we do sanitize the senior centers. And I know the issue coming up now is that there were individuals that were tested positive and they were out for the, the fourteen days and they returned to their work sites. Yet some of the staff are afraid because the individual is still positive. And so with the recommendations from CDC, it is really up to the employer to, um, make that decision for that staff to re-enter their work sites. Um, they can and we are allowing it. But we do still enforce, tell them to enforce the protection, sanitization and all of that. Um, I know there's maybe some complaints out there, issues, concerns about that. But that, that is what we, the decision that we made right now. So, onto the next, um. The essential staff here in Winter Rock, we are, some of us are here, eight to five. Some that can work from home, are working from home. And it, it's kind of concerning when the Command Center was here in our building. But now that the Command Center was moved to a different facility, it, it's, it's become more easier to come to work. Um, so we are here. Um, that, that's, that's my report. If you have any questions. Thank you.
Committee members, uh, the floor is open for questions regarding the, uh, report that was emailed as well as the oral presentation.
Chair, I have a few questions.
Honorable Cornell Halona.
Thank you, uh, Chair, and thank you to the presenters for your information, uh, and good morning, everybody. Uh, I, I have, uh, questions about the, uh, uh, fundings that were given to the, uh, senior citizens, uh, from the, from Santa Fe and, and all the projects that you are working on, on the Senior Citizen Center. Can I get, uh, an update on all those projects, if there have been any completed or if there's still anybody working on them at all? And whatever the, uh, complete updates are on all the Daltech projects from the state of Mexico.
Thank you, Mr. Halona. Are you referencing the capital outlay projects?
Uh, yes, ma'am, from the state.
Yes, in New Mexico?
That's correct.
Okay, uh, right now, I'm not sure if you guys were aware of this, but Ms. Wheeler, Bernita Wheeler, was overseeing these projects. And she left the program back in December. Since then, I, I've taken on that role and I've tried to, I've educated myself. I met with Capitol staff to move forward with these projects. Um, it is going, I, um, I'm, I'm doing my best that I possibly can to, um, take care of these and move these projects forward. I'm, I'm the only one here along with my SOS and I'm like wearing three hats here. The planner, the project specialist, the delegated HSA, and then I'm PS2 over for Defiance Agency. So, I have a lot of responsibilities and I am moving forward with them. Unfortunately, we lost, we are pa- reverting a hundred thousand dollars in that, that Pueblo Pantano project. Other than that, everything is okay. They have expiration dates of next year, twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-three. Um, but, so that's the report on that. And then there were two junior bills that were given to us for fifty thousand dollars each. Those were used, those funds were used and nothing should be reverted. Uh, it just needs to be paid out. So, once that is done, once that is done, we'll be okay with that. And I hired a planner to temporarily take care of two projects. And he is here now. He's working on it. He's educating himself with it. So, I hope we plan to move more with this. Thank you.
Okay, um, um. Could you get us a written report on each one of the projects and, 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 uh, I want to see where they're at exactly? And how much timeframe, when they're gonna be, uh, before they can get, uh, need to be completed? That's what I'm interested in finding out.
Yes, I can email that to you.
Um. Committee members, anybody else?
Chair, uh, delegate Paul begin?
Oh, yeah, Dave, Chair, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, thank you for the report. Uh, thank you, Chair, other committee members. I kind of went in and out, uh, of telephone range. Uh, apologize for that, but I'm back on. I think I'm stationary right now. So hopefully get the full, uh, meeting in. Thank you. Uh, I'm wondering, uh, on your report. I oversee five chapters, uh, bodily gap, compromise, Chii, Kaibito and Tonalea. And I'm wondering if there is a, a accounting system. Uh, you report that the PPEs are delivered and, and these senior citizen, uh, centers have access to that. But I continue to get, uh, requests and complaints about not in, not enough PPEs being available. Specifically for Kaibito and also Tonalea. Uh, how do we know that, uh, these PPE and the essential things that the centers need are, are given to these centers? Uh, I have been purchasing on my own some cleaning supplies, wipes, uh, Clorox, uh, things that they need and giving them to these centers on my own. So, you know, I just keep, uh, what, where, where are these PPE? And so that's why I question, is there a, a log that is being kept to say that, uh, Kaibito Senior Citizen got this amount, got these items? Tonalea has, uh, has these items? They were delivered on this day? Um, that way I can kind of know that these items were delivered, rather than listening to them saying that they don't have what they need. Um, you see, uh, I know that there's, uh, food distribution out there and a lot of these, uh, uh, disinfectant spray and wipes, uh, they're constantly in need of because they have to continue to wipe down their vehicles, uh, everything like that. So, you see, uh, so, uh, thank you, Chair.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes, thank you, sir. Thank you for the question. I do have a log of what was distributed to each agency. I can provide that log to you. But once it gets to the agency, it's the agency's responsibility to distribute it to their senior centers. I can provide that log to you as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
I, I guess, uh, Ms. Henderson, it's, uh, the answer is vague. His question was very specific. Um. And he put it on the record and can you, uh, I guess, give a better response to what you just provided?
Yes, sir. I can, I can, from what I have right here now, um, on May, let me give you, um, an example. March twentieth, forty-five boxes of large gloves, forty-five boxes of medium gloves we received. Those forty-five were divided among five agencies. On March twenty-seventh, we received to-go boxes, forty-five boxes. We distributed, distributed that among the five agencies. April third, we received homemade masks. On April thirtieth, we received N-95 masks. On May sixth, we received KN-95 masks. May eleventh, we delivered disposable masks, gloves and eighty and face shields. On May twelve, we received five thousand masks. Those were divided by, uh, five agencies. May eighth, we had home delivery trays and those were delivered or divided among five agencies. Uh, May fifth, we also had handmade masks and we had hand sanitizers that were, um, divided among five agencies. May twentieth, we received some shields, face shields, some gloves and some masks. And those were divided among the agencies. June one, we received face shields and safety glasses. Those were distributed among the agencies. June sixteenth, we received hand sanitizers and disinfectant wipes. And those were distributed. And on July, July, or June twenty-sixth, I believe, we received Clorox and Dawn dish soap. Those were distributed. They were given thirty cases each. And just on July second, is it second? Yeah, Thursday. We received more Clorox boxes and we received, um, more Dawn dish soap. And those were delivered to, delivered to five agencies as well. We also received a donation of cleaning supplies from the OPVP warehouse. And they distributed that to Daltech's and we divided that among the agencies, which consisted of the adult diapers, um, wash basins, cleaning supplies, paper plates, paper towels, utensils, and that was all distributed as well. Thank you.
Chair, have any questions?
Thank you. Uh, Honorable Halona.
Uh, Ms. Henderson, so all supplies that you were talking about, are they all donated? Or are you guys using some of that, uh, funding that, uh, for the COVID funding that you received? The sixty-two thousand and the two hundred ninety-one thousand? Are you just purchasing all that with some of that, uh, money? And then, um, when the Senior Citizen Center, are you giving masks, uh, enough them to give the masks to the, to the, to the patrons that come in? Are they receiving some of that or is it just going to the workers?
Mr. Halona, as far as the funding that we have received, uh, we are using that, right? We're gathering quotations for that right now to purchase supplies for the coming months, the next coming months, because we're not unsure, we're not sure of how long we will be operating in this fashion. So those funds are gonna be used for that. And the funding that we have received, or I'm sorry, the supplies that we have received thus far has been coming from the, uh, not the Command, yeah, the Command Center and the Executive Office. As well as some of the agencies are purchasing their own as they have funds for operating supplies using general funds. And as far as, uh, masks, right now, we are, um, having just that to, given to the, um, staff right now because we're so, we have minimal supplies right now. But going forward, as we are getting more masks in and when the elders come to the centers, they are giving, um, disposable face masks. Thank you.
Okay, so in the future, you're gonna start using that, uh, uh, COVID funding to buy more, more PPEs and distribute some to the seniors?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Committee members, any follow-up questions? Okay, um, Mr., okay, uh, committee members? Any further questions? If not, then I'm gonna, uh, allow the other, our colleague from the twenty-fourth to also pose questions. Um, Patilla, Mr. Otto, so, you have the floor.
Thank you, thank you very much, uh, Chairman, I don't, uh, members of the House of Human Service Committee, auto, uh...
Were you able to get Mr.?
Kado, eh, ya, uh, bashne, eh, ya, uh, I really, uh, want to expand on, I want to expand on, um...
It reminded me, I said, oh, I forgot.
Ya, da, la. Mute, uh, mute your phone, I saw, that's... Uh, see there, um, the issue of, uh, PPEs at the, uh, local senior citizen, uh, level, uh, the, and our programs, uh, in the field, uh, what I have, what I grasp is that, that Wonder Rock has dispersed, shows record that they dispersed information to, to the, uh, agency level, but who at the agency level has the information? Uh, if you could maybe provide a report to, uh, leadership when these, uh, things happen so that we as leadership out in the field, cause then, when we're back in the area, eh, you know, I just, we actually have staff saying, PPE, uh, ten, uh, ten, eh, da, ni, uh, uh, that's my concern. Uh, we need paper trail on who in the field received them. If, uh, for instance, right now, um, I'm gonna get a hold of Mr., uh, the, 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 the agency director for, um, the elder, uh, just, uh, my gosh, what was their name? Uh, their name has changed so many times, and, uh, but, uh, Mr. Charles, uh, I'm gonna get a hold of him and ask him for record, but this information should be provided from the, uh, program there at, uh, from Wonder Rock, that way leadership is aware of what's out there. So when someone asks me, so like, just like Honorable Paul B. Gay indicated that, uh, they need PPE, it sounds like there's not, there's not many PPE in tonalea and, uh, khaibito. So he could expand on it and say, okay, so what information I have, uh, eh, this is what you have, what happened to it? Uh, 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 I guess your, your reporting mechanism there, uh, if you could expand on, uh, providing that information to all the, uh, delegates, twenty-four delegates would be, uh, proper, because, uh, I don't serve on Health and Human Service Committee, but once I get back into my community, I get questions related to this issue of, uh, of, uh, senior citizens, and they even go as far as, uh, to the chapters, chapter, now you're not, that, okay, uh, at the same time, the chapter is saying, I wonder what, what is the program doing? Uh, uh, eh, yeah, I guess that communication needs to be communicated out there, and, uh, especially out to the chapters, too. That way they know that, um, they know that, uh, PPE had been delivered and received for their local, um, office. Uh, eh, ya, uh, I don't, a report, if you can, uh, like I indicated, uh, if you could, if you could email me your report, and you provided to the committee would be, uh, uh, tangible information to me, so that I have this information for my seniors when I get into my area. Uh, eh, ya, uh, and, uh, the other is that, I guess, the reimbursement, uh, that are being, uh, uh, requested related to the meals, congregant meal, uh, what's happening to them right now? Are we, is, uh, is the program, um, presenting and, uh, uh, presenting reimbursement back to the state related to the meals that it provides for the, uh, senior program? Uh, with this, eh, uh, issue of COVID now, is there, eh, 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 is there a chance that, uh, is there a chance that the program is not processing these documents at this time, those, uh, reimbursements? So if we, if we look at it, if the reimbursements are based off of quarterly reimbursement, what is the numbers for the, uh, second quarter? What, what, what does it look like? And then, uh, with the projections from this last quarter to the end, to the end of the, of, of fourth quarter, what does the projections look like? Uh, process, is, is there any movement in that area for reimbursement? Uh, eh, yeah, I'm just looking at the operation and, uh, seeing if, if that is, uh, being provided, because at the end of the day, if these reimbursements are not provided, the national nation is gonna eat the cost. Reimbursements, I don't know, that's extra revenue to the nation and to the program there, because the next fiscal year is something that, 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 that we have to really, really look at. Uh, whatever funding the program received last year, that's what you're gonna, you're gonna probably gonna get this coming year. There's gonna be no increases or anything, but next year, I worry about next year's funding, twenty-twenty, uh, or twenty-twenty-two fiscal year, eh, definitely, there's gonna be less money. Uh, eh, reimbursement, how are you guys, are you guys on it, or?
Ms. Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Sato, for the questions. In regards to the inventory, the law, the control of, um, PPEs being distributed, I will, um, provide all the delegates, the leadership within the communities that report going forward, I will provide that. As far as, um, reimbursement of the meals provided by senior centers, the funding, we are relying heavily on our state contracts, which is Title, Title Six and New Mexico House Bill Two. We are, well, I should say finance, is recording units and documenting and providing this information to the state for reimbursement. It's an ongoing process that we work with, uh, OOC with, and though it did not stop, it's going, it's continuing. There was a lot of, um, exceptions made beginning March regarding these fundings, where you're, where we had to make food, um, bags or food purchases for several days for these, for some of these elders, and those were submitted to the state as units, and they are being submitted, reported, and reimbursed, uh, where, OOC is now working on the closeout of these, um, two, actually, New Mexico House Bill Two and Title Three, they're working on closeouts right now, and they are reporting and submitting everything for reimbursement. Thank you.
Further questions, committee members?
Uh, another question, thank you.
Chair, this is Elliot Slater.
Uh, Honorable Slater and Honorable Halona.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, thanks for the presentation, Ms., uh, Anderson. Um, it really seems, I, I don't know how to say this, like it's a mixed bag, whereas before, I felt that things were not being adequately addressed, um, in terms of the PPE and the resources and provisioning to our, our senior programs. And I'm hearing from some of my senior programs that they are, they're, they're well provisioned, they're stocked up, um, and that's great to hear, because it's the first time in months, um...
But with that much just to tell them...
Chair, give me one second. There's a chapter meeting right now, and I have my mask on, I'm walking outside, so I apologize, I was listening on the line for the delay. But I, I, I'm, I'm happy to report back to you that, you know, I'm hearing positive things on the program, and that the monies that have come in seem to be making an impact in terms of having the resources available at the, at the chapters. But when it comes to ordering food, I think there's still some miscommunications on the contract with Blue Mountain Meats, and you might need to contact, uh, and, and try and understand the issue they're having there, so that's a, a request I have of you.
Yeah, I would just, I would, I would let her know that she's just there just to listen to, to...
Hey, whoever is on the phone talking about Claire listening, can you please mute your phone?
Mm-hmm.
You just said, mm-hmm?
Hello?
Hello, you guys are having a conversation on a committee call right now.
Yeah.
Ms., Ms. Martinez, and, Mr. Rose, is there an ability to mute everybody?
I don't have that, it's on my iPhone.
Oh, gosh.
Okay, person who just said, oh, gosh, can you please mute your phone? We have a committee meeting to conduct here.
So I, I, um...
Because sometimes you type and stuff...
Chair, um, the Speaker's Office has another member available, I don't know if it's presently available right now, but we should just move to that, and then hopefully they can help manage and kick people off who aren't being respectful. Should we contact Mr. Shorty now and see if that's available?
Mr. Chair, everyone can log off and then log back on?
Hey, I just for snack, eh, hey, she is for snack.
Good morning, sorry, I'm on a...
Mute your phone.
Oh, yeah. Mr. Chair, everybody can log off and then log back on?
I'm almost certain that there's a way you can mute the call, um, using the system, whoever's running that system, there's a way to mute callers, and you can identify the phone number and the caller of the individual who is talking.
Leonard, do you have that number, the code?
I would get with Emo or get with Byron to get the, the PIN number to actually, to have, to have that administrative access to be able to mute individuals, cause it's very noticeable when you have that screen in, all these callers are calling in, and when you notice that they're, they're speaking, you're, you're, you have that capability of muting them.
Um, we have trouble with our internet, you can't do that at this time, you just have to tell the callers...
Committee members, let's, uh, hang up and then call back in.
Uh, Chair, I got the number from Brian here, it's an alternate number, an all-day mail to everybody, and he can mute, uh, phone numbers from his office. I'll go ahead and email that number, there's no access number, code of, I'll give you the number, and he gets to dial in.
And then, uh, as these other folks, uh, come on the agenda, then text that number to them also. Let us get through with this Daltech, uh, agenda item first.
All right, so when, when we get these people who don't, won't mute their phones, Mr. Shorty can mute their phones from his office. So I'll go ahead and email you all the numbers, and then we'll call back in.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hello, this is Barbara O'Keefe, I will need that number to have Mr. Yasi call in, he's presenting before our meeting, so I will need that number as well for him.
That's LBA Barbara O'Keefe, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello? Is everybody there? Oh, yeah, where you at? Uh, uh, everything went blank for a second.
Chair, we have four members, yourself, Vice Chair, Honorable Halona, and Honorable Henderson De Wunika.
They'll get all the data on the liner.
Okay, that's five, sir.
Okay. Okay, let's go back to Ms. Leonora Henderson, uh, regarding these, uh, questions posed by, um, Honorable Slater.
Thank you, Chair, I'm glad we were able to get back on the line without interference. Did, did we confirm that she's here?
I am here, Slater.
Okay, thank you. Um-
Go ahead, uh, Philip, continue.
Just summarize briefly. Uh, from what I can tell within my district and central agency where I communicate with, uh, senior centers pretty routinely, it seems like there definitely is more provision that is available to the program. I think some of them might be experiencing, or will soon be experiencing, a shortage of gloves, um, including the Round Rock Senior Center. And with the Blue Mountain Meats contract, can you follow up with Luka Chakai? And they seem to have some issue that I couldn't quite understand on the ordering and the money within the state becoming available on July 1, as opposed to ordering, I don't know, what, June? Um, but e- even if things are good now, it doesn't mean that it's going to be this, or they're all right now, which I, I don't know exactly how we could come to that determination. Navajo nationwide, it sounds like across other districts, there's completely different situations occurring. Um, whenever this second wave hits, like, I think that needs to be our organizational focus. Um, we have the procedures set up to handle us right now, and maybe the resources. But I think we need to think in the back of our mind, what if things got tremendously worse? What would the contingencies be? How would we be able to continue to provide services? And, um, what can we put in place today that will set us up for success in the future? So that's my request to you right now, is to conceptualize that, and maybe in a few weeks, you can come back before the committee to discuss what that plan may look like, or input you may need from the legislative branch or others to, to help accomplish that. But I do appreciate the work of all of your employees, and to that end, I'm curious, what have the discussions been regarding hazard pay or special duty pay for our senior center workers? Because it seems like they've been working non-stop, they're on the front lines, they consistently have to put themselves, uh, with a chance for potential exposure at much higher rates than other, um, employees. And I know we have an issue with recruitment and retention, and I can only imagine that that would be exacerbated during a crisis where people don't want to expose themselves, and they're happy to leave the second they get a paycheck. So, um, can, can you explain what the discussions have been regarding special duty or hazard pay for your workers?
Honorable Slater, thank you for the questions. Um, I'll answer, I'll answer your questions that you have posed. I will look into the ordering for, um, the Gajagai, and you said the gloves with Round Rock, right?
Correct.
Okay, and then as far as, um, resources, the COVID fund, the COVID-19 funding that we received from Title III and Title VI, I'm thinking of using, well, I'm planning on using those funds to stock, stock and gather supplies for the future. We, I, we realize and understand that, um, we're, we're, we are not quite sure how long we'll be operating in this fashion, so that's what we're doing, we're gathering quotations together.
Ms. Henderson, you went offline again.
Um, Chairman, I apologize, um, if, if you are playing the live stream of this also online in the background, can you please turn your speaker on that live stream down? Um, there is an echo, and it is, uh, a little bit difficult to understand what's being said right now versus what was being said five seconds ago or 10 seconds ago.
Hello?
Hello.
May I continue?
Yes.
Okay, as far as the second wave goes, and the contingency plan to that, right now, um, Dr. Jim has asked me to get together with the program supervisors for each agency, and we are working on a plan to re, um, to come back to the office, re-enter the work, work, work site. All those staff are already there, but more for senior centers is how are we going to continue to, um, provide these meals in a safe fashion in the future? Because, um, we're not exactly sure when we will fully go into fully operational function again, function mode. So, I will get back to you on that. I, I'm having a, um, meeting, discussion with them on that tomorrow, and we are going to be moving forward with that. Once we have that plan together, I will, um, I guess, email the council delegates for their input, because I know they are out there and they have their issues, their, their, um, concerns and issues with the senior centers and the staff as well. So, I, I'm, I'm open to the suggestions and recommendations that, that, um, our leadership has to offer to me. I, 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 I'm open to that, and I thank you and appreciate you for that. As far as the hazard pay, we, the agencies were told, you know, you know, the recruitment, the retention is an issue with Daltechs. Some staff have left due to this virus. Um, we're having problems recruiting because the staff don't want to be out on frontline, working out there, so these positions are becoming vacant in high numbers, and the recruitment is just at a standstill right now with all the other offices closed, especially like the, um, Background Investigation Office. Um, and as far as hazard pay, we are working within our own general fund budget to transfer funds to the line items that we were given by payroll in order to pay these individuals that have worked since March 16 through this pandemic. We are working through that. I can't say we do have enough funds, but we have vacant positions that have not been filled since October 1, the beginning of the fiscal year, and those are the funds that we are transferring out into these line items to ensure that our staff are paid. Thank you.
Chair, this is Elliot Slater, I have a couple of follow-ups.
Uh, go ahead, uh, Honorable Slater.
Thank you. So when you say that the, it's being transferred to this line item, are you saying, is that just for accounting purposes? And for future retroactive repayment of the number of hours to the program? Um, or how exactly would that work? And I know, I think a lot of your positions are general funded, and then some of them are, are grant funded. So if monies would be, are being reimbursed through the CARES Act for, uh, say, a staff position that's grant funded, how would that work? I mean, would the money go back, would that open, free up the grant funding for other purposes, um, or not? I mean, maybe you don't have enough staff hired under those grants for it to make sense, but if you could walk through that process, because, um, you know, this could be a tremendous number of hours that end up getting transferred over and opening up into, opening, or freeing up funding in the program, whether it's grant or general funds, and that really would require, uh, a conversation with oversight and with the council. Um, and Chair, I believe we need to bring DPM and OOC back before us to discuss that concept of the reimbursement for payroll expenses related to COVID. Um, it could be a lot of money, and I can easily see money ending up back in programs that then don't have expenditure accountability plans attached to it. Maybe not, maybe that's not going to happen, but we need to figure that out. And then, my second question is for... Actually, I'll, I'll, I'll leave it at that, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Honorable Slater. Uh, Ms. Leonora Henderson, respective of that, uh, when a center, uh, closes, you said that the staff go on leave. Do they then go back on the, um, oh, what's the term that all staff were on?
Administrative leave.
Administrative leave, yes, thank you. Is that what happens, or are they having to go on annual leave, or do, uh, leave without pay? Uh, that wa, that's one thing that, uh, I, I, um, think we need clarification on. Thank you.
Honorable Slater, to answer your question, um, majority of our staff, the senior center staff, the supervisor, the cook, and the driver are funded, funded through, paid through general funds. And when I say transfer, I'm saying, so there's a cook that has, is, 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 has their own line item in the budget. And so, when they talk about this, um, hazard pay, and special duty pay, I think that's what they call it, there's a line object code that was established for it, so, for the exempt and the non-exempt employees, and those funds, the positions that are vacant right now, we're transferring those funds into those object codes to ensure that the exempt and the non-exempt employees get this hazard pay if they were working during this pandemic, which they call special duty on the time, master time sheet that is provided by payroll. Uh, so these hours are submitted as special pay, and yes, they will be retroactive to, I believe it's March 16, that pay period ending. And so, so that, that's my understanding of how this is going to work thus far. As far as, um, um, positions that are funded under external contracts, grants, those positions are mainly, uh, here at the central office. And, you know, these, we are central- we are essential staff, but they are, um, essential non-frontline workers is how they identified them. So, we are here, we are working, but we are not out there serving. So, these funds, the, they're funded through external contracts, and they are still getting paid. They, it's getting reimbursed as we, it's getting submitted to the state to get reimbursed as some of these employees are still working. I hope that answers your question, and yes, I do need, we do need to get back with, uh, DPM and I believe payroll to get further clarification on this. Right now, there, it, that's, as far as I understand it, and that's just what we're doing right now, are these budget transfers. Uh, that's for that, and then, um, Delegate, so, when a center closes, uh, for possible exposure, the staff are released and they are put on administrative leave. They are, they go, depending if they test positive or negative. If it's negative, they go into self-monitor. If it's positive, they go into self, um, quarantine. So, once they do that, the positive person's gonna stay out a total of 14 days, and then they go back in and get retested. Of course, that, they're gonna be positive, and that's, um, the doctor, they say, the doctor says that they are gonna show a positive test result for at least two to three weeks, maybe even months. And so, they leave it up to us, the, their employer, to establish re-entry program, re-entry policies. Are, to, 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 that, so to say, are we going to allow these individuals back into, um, work site, even if they're positive? And, um, that's the decision that we need to make on our end. The ones that test negative and return back to the, they, they automatically return back to their work site and continue their duties. So, that is one of the questions that is posed, decision that we have to make right now. Uh, doctors say that they can re-enter the program, re-enter the work area, and continue to practice precautionary measures, everything that we, uh, we were, our norm now, cleaning, wiping, sanitizing, and they continue to do that, and, and it's highly unlikely that they will spread this, but they are still going to test positive. So, uh, these questions were posed to me the last week and this week, so I'm still trying to get clarification. I'm talking with, um, Dr. Jim, and I'm, we're getting clarification on this. We're educating ourselves, we're using the CDC guidelines, and so, that, that's where that's at right now. Thank you.
Committee members, back to you.
Uh, Delegate Halona, Chair?
Go ahead, Honorable Halona.
Um, Ms. Henderson, I was, I want to refer to the, your statements just now that you're, you're trying to decide to let them work, even though they're testing positive. Is that what you said?
Ms. Henderson?
Uh, Delegate Halona, um, yes, we're trying to make the decision on, um, whether we allow them back into their, um, um, work site if they're still positive, and that's the, we're, what we're researching right now, getting, gathering more information on that. Because according to the doctors, um, they will still test positive for maybe two, three, four weeks, even months at the most. So, that, that's a policy or, um, I guess, something that Dr. Jim and I, the command center, that need to make that determination. And, and if they do remain out of the workforce, h- how are we going to pay them? Thank you.
Okay, so, um, I, 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 I still think that that's a no-brainer decision that anybody that tests positive needs to be on quarantine for a certain period of time. Uh, and, you know, that's what we've been advocating all along for all these people, anybody that comes in contact, even though if you have, come in contact with somebody, uh, you get tested, and then you gotta go on quarantine to stay away for a certain period of time, 10 to 14 days. So, I kinda don't understand why you're thinking that you need to make that decision. Isn't that what the CDC guidelines are saying? Is that you recommend that you go on quarantine?
Yes, sir, and that is being adhered to. Eh, I guess, um, maybe I should, I, I should clarify myself a little further. So, this person tested positive, they quarantined themselves for the number of days that they're, were told to stay out of the, um, workforce for public self-quarantine, 14 days. So, they do that, and they, they survive, they get better, they have no more symptoms, eh, so forth. So, what we are asking these staff, in order for them to come back to work, they need to get retested. And of course, if they get retested, some of them are negative and they come back to work. Some of them will remain positive. And so, that was our question. Do we leave them out? And so, the questions we are looking and searching for are what, what, what the doctors are recommending. Well, I guess the patient, that, their doctor said that it is okay for them to come back to work. So, we're, like I said, we're looking at that, and yes, that, we should allow them to stay out, and... Thank you.
Yeah, I think that would be the way we need to go, because we don't need to try to put any of, uh, any of those elders, uh, in any danger in that capacity. Um, that's what I would think about it. But, uh, uh, so, my next question that I had is, is on the funding that you guys are getting from the state and the funding from the Navajo Nation. Um, I, I remember last year, we were running into a situation where all the funds were being drawn down from the funding, uh, funding, uh, being used through the Navajo Nation, and they ran out of money, but there was still a lump sum money there that was coming from the state. Are you guys drawing that money down from the state as we go along, or, or, um, using Navajo Nation funds?
Um, Delegate Halona, I, I, I'm not sure exactly what you're talking about, but the, um, you know, funds that we receive from the state, they are, we are submitting reimbursement claims for them. I believe it's on a monthly basis from New Mexico, off-bill too. Those are, those expenses are submitted to the state, and we are reimbursed in that fashion. I'm not sure what other funding you're talking about. Thank you.
Okay, just to, um, regard, regarding the, um, you know, back in March, the council appropriated 4 million to Navajo Division of Health to basically, uh, uh, support the, the programs within the Department of Health, uh, regarding the acquisition of PPEs and, um, related services. How much of that 4 million has Daltechs used? And do you have any information regarding that particular appropriation and how, um, your program that you're, um, directing has used?
Honorable So, I am familiar with the funding that we receive. Daltechs received $300,000 of funds, of funds that were appropriated to us, to NDOH Command Center. Thus far, um, we have ordered about 110,000 in, um, cleaning supplies and PPEs, and the, the agencies all have, um, um, purchase orders for their local grocery stores in the amount of 30, 30,000 dollars each. So, that's about another, another 150,000 right there. So, I would say, I would, I, just, but giving those two numbers, I would say we're pretty close to spending that, those funds off. All our requests get submitted to, um, the command center using the, I believe it's called, 213th, and Ms. Christine Chavez is the one that pays these, um, invoices, whatever we give her to take care of, and she takes care of that for us. We just received, uh, several weeks ago, the purchase orders for, in the amount of 30,000 dollars. So, the agencies have those right now. Thank you.
Okay. Um, committee members, any other questions?
Delegate Paul Begay?
Oh, Che, go ahead. You have the floor.
Thank you, Che. Um, as far as hazard pay, who determines who is eligible for hazard pay? That's one of the questions that, uh, these, uh, people that work in the senior center ask me. In fact, I was asked a couple of days ago. I'd like to have an answer for that. What is the basis? What is the criteria, if there is any, used to determine who is, uh, eligible for hazard pay? Uh, that would be one question. The other one is just more of a concern. I agree with Honorable Delegate Pernell Halona that it doesn't take, uh, very much thought to decide if a person is positive, is positive, even though, uh, uh, he may not show, show symptoms or signs or anything like that. Uh, this, this virus is very serious, and we cannot, eh, it seems like we're saying, uh, oh, we'll, we'll, we'll decide. Somebody will decide if it's okay. We're taking chances. We're taking chances on people, and in this case, the most vulnerable people, because tweet, are elderly. My son, eh, say, eh, another. And we, I know that we want to hold on to them for as long as we can. So, I, I, I don't think, nobody needs to be thinking about whether or not to allow a, a positive person to come back to work. That should be automatically decided. Will they, might have liability issues later on? Joe, a quarter of an hour, Che. Uh, thank you, Che, Chair.
Hello, um, I, I guess, based on committee members, based on the responses, it seems like, uh, we need to hear from, uh, um, the folks in charge, respective of their status. Uh, so perhaps on committee members and accepting the report, we could then, uh, request a report, follow-up report from, um, Personnel Management, DPM, uh, Dr. Jill Jim, as well as OOC regarding, um, some of the questions regarding the funding, uh, and their, their usage and their balances. Asian, oh, that, that, the meeting, committee members, so the chair is open, or motion to accept the report?
Uh, Chair, Delegate Halona, motion to accept the report, uh, to include, uh, the messages that you just recorded. Also, to, uh, get a, a, a report for the, uh, uh, projects from New Mexico State, all the, all the, uh, state projects that are being worked on, and then, I think she said there was one that was reverted. I wanted to, uh, make sure that we have that on record.
And, eh, oh, thank you. Um, after the second of the motion, I'll, I guess, address that because that's a project within my district. Do I have a second?
Second, Winika.
Thank you, Cecilla. Honorable Winika, we have a second. Committee members, I'm getting mixed messages. Uh, James Adicai, within the Division of Community Development, had written a letter to the, uh, Long-Term Aging Capital Projects that he wished to keep the project going because it was in the 164 review when the pandemic, uh, the closing of Navajo Nation operations occurred. Although, at the same time, uh, Ms. Cheryl Niyazi provided, uh, a committee with projects, and it shows the Pueblo Pantado facility will be on the capital outlay question. You know, how we always vote on whether to, um, approve, uh, senior centers across the state of New Mexico. It shows that they'll be listed for 2.8 million dollars. So, I'm getting mixed messages. Ms. Henderson, please get with Ms. uh, Ms. Cheryl Niyazi and Mr. James Adicai, and profo, provide to the committee a, an update as soon as possible on the, um, Pueblo Pantado Senior Center Facility. Put Ayla, and then, I guess, uh, get together on the whole listing. With that, committee members, uh, Mr. Moes, could we have a roll call vote?
Yes, sir. Honorable Paul Begay Jr.
Green.
Thank you, sir. Honorable Carl Russell Slater?
Delegate Slater Green.
Thank you, sir. Honorable Pernell Halona?
Honorable Green.
Honorable Charlene So? Honorable Charlene So? Honorable Edison J. Winika?
Green.
Thank you. Chair, a vote of four in favor, zero opposed?
Thank you, uh, Che, Moes. Um, let the record show a vote of four in favor, zero opposed, and the chair not voting. So, we'll go on to, uh, the next agenda item. Um, uh, update on the COVID-19. The presenters will be Dr. Jill Jim, uh, Ramona Antonas, uh, Del Yazi, uh, Laura Hammett. Um, then there's, uh, Dr. Eric Um, then there's, uh, Dr. Eric Ritchie, um, Dr. Thiera Wa. Who will be the first, uh, presenter, as, uh, you have the floor? Um, Mr. Mose, uh, did you text the, those call-in numbers, the new call-in numbers to, to this group here?
No, I did, I, go ahead and email, um, I'll go to Dr. Jill.
Okay.
And then she can pass it on to the others.
So, yet, yet eh, uh, uh, Chanatani, uh, Chair So, and Vice Chair Slater, and, uh, committee members. This is, uh, Dell. Uh, Dr. Jim is in another meeting, we're trying to get her. Um, but I'll, uh, go ahead and start and do some introductions with the, the team members. I know Dr. Hammett is on the call. J, uh, my name is Dell, uh, Navajo Epidemiology Center, eh, banashnesh. Although, uh, khitlichi ne, dashema, although, khatchi ne, dashijae. Uh, shkhatsoi, dashich, do, may dashkiz ne, dashinad. Although, eh, kapijji, kapijji na, uh, covid zone, ah, yeah, eh, eh, isina shah. Although, uh, Dr. Hammett, though, uh, shishi, uh, present, isne soles. Uh, while we're getting Dr. Jim, we're doing a she, that's, she'll join us. Uh, Ramona, though, she's on the call, uh, Ramona Antones, she's our Director of Navajo Epidemiology Center. So, um, we emailed, um, our, our presentation this morning. Dr. Jim sent it to Ms. Martinez, uh, I hope you all received it. We'll be presenting on that, uh, Dr. Hammett and I. Because she, um, I'll, uh, I'll let, uh, Dr. Hammett to introduce herself.
Thank you, Dell. Yet eh, ben eh, she, Laura Hammett, in a she, uh, Johns Hopkins Center for American Indian Health, banashnesh. Um, I live in Durango, and I'm happy to be, uh, joining today. I work for Johns Hopkins, but, uh, I am appointed, uh, to the Testing Coordination Team on the, uh, Health Command Operations Center for the COVID nineteen response.
Thank you, uh.
Thank you, yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Hammett. Um, Ramona, do you want to introduce yourself?
Yet eh, uh, I'm Ramona Antones, uh, toba nishnado, irko nare, bashischin. Loka dene, dashich, nana, irko nare, dashinadu, le, tsinad, basade, ayisina shah, ishru Navajo de. I'm happy to be here, thank you.
We're doing introduction. So, um, Dr. Jim just joined us, so, uh, she can introduce herself.
Good afternoon, this is Dr. Jim, I'm just joining the call now, thank you so much for the invitation.
Oh, yeah, uh, thank you, Dr. Jim. Uh, koshin, oh, kroshin, uh, present, isne soles, uh, chair so, uh, with Dr. Hammett. Um, Dr. Hammett, well, go first, so, go ahead, Laura.
Thank you, Dell. I hope everybody is able to see the slides that we shared this morning. We went through this talk about the Navajo Nation COVID nineteen testing strategy and the gating measures, which are, um, measures that we use to help us determine when it's safe, uh, to reopen and the phases of reopening. The second slide in the presentation just shows, uh, the Health Command Operations Center for the COVID nineteen response is headed by Dr. Jim, Dr. Christensen from IHS, and Virgil Davis. Um, and under the Public Health Operations Response, which is headed by Ramona Antones and Chanel Damon, you can see the Epidemiology Team, uh, led by Dell and, uh, Dr. Terry Baugh. And on the Case Management Team, under Burnett Pine and Joel Moses, uh, Dr. Eric Ritchie and myself lead the Testing Coordination Effort. We just wanted to provide that structure so people understand where we sit, um, in the response team. On the third slide, um, we've summarized that the COVID nineteen testing strategy for Navajo Nation is based on recommendations from, uh, the states in the area, and primarily from the CDC, with adaptation for Navajo Nation. As with everything, um, with this pandemic, we're learning new information all the time, and we need to be able to adapt, uh, to the new information, and our recommendations may change. But I have provided the links, uh, for the CDC and FDA websites that primarily focus on testing information. The fourth slide here shows a flyer that we've developed to describe the two different types of testing for COVID nineteen that are available on Navajo Nation. One is a viral test, or a diagnostic test, and the other is an antibody or a serology test. One of the things that we've really tried to emphasize in all of our discussions around testing is that testing does not prevent future infection. Um, to slow the spread of disease, testing can be important so that we can identify and isolate cases. But other key aspects, um, are wearing masks, washing hands often, maintaining, uh, physical distance between people. The two different types of tests, just to go into a little bit more detail on what those are. The viral test or the di- the diagnostic test, um, tech- detects genetic material from the virus, from the coronavirus, uh, that causes COVID nineteen disease. It is what we use to identify current COVID nineteen infections. And most typically, this is done by taking a swab, um, uh, from, a swab specimen from the back of the nose or the throat, um, or sometimes a saliva sample can also be used. This diagnostic test, or this viral test, is not recommended to determine when someone has recovered from COVID nineteen. The test can remain positive for several weeks after somebody is recovered. And all that it's detecting at that point is dead virus. So, we do not recommend that this test be used to determine if someone has recovered. Instead, we follow the CDC guidelines that are based on symptoms or the time since, uh, the test was positive. I think this speaks a little bit to, um, the questions earlier about what physicians are currently recommending in terms of people re-entering the workplace after a positive test. Um, because that test, you know, as we just said, can remain positive for a while and, and just be detecting dead virus that doesn't pose a risk of transmission. And we're really not recommending this for, for that situation. Um, this, this test, the viral test, does not test for any human genetic material. It only tests for the viral genetic material. The test is performed on, uh, in three main ways. We have, uh, instruments at most of the facilities on Navajo Nation, uh, called the Abbott ID Now Instrument. And that one can run one test at a time. Results can be available in fifteen minutes. So, it is quick, um, but because the test can only run, or the instrument can only run one test at a time, um, you can only test about four people an hour, um, with this test. So, it's not very good for high-volume testing, when you need to test a lot of people. The Sechia Gene Expert Test is another type of test that's available at most of the facilities on Navajo Nation. It can run many tests at a time. It's also fairly quick, results can be available as soon as one hour. Um, but there are supply constraints for this test, and so, uh, it's not as available as we would like. Because of those supply constraints, um, for the instruments that we have in place at, uh, facilities here on Navajo, we oftentimes will send tests out to commercial or reference laboratories. These are places like Sonora Quest, or LabCorp, or Tricorp. And results from those tests are usually available in two to five days. When somebody has a viral test performed, a positive result means that that person's very likely to have a co- COVID infection right now, currently. A negative result means the person very likely does not have a current COVID infection. But for a small percent of people, the test can be falsely negative. And so, in order to prevent the spread of COVID, patients with a negative test who have symptoms should still self-isolate. Um, as should people who, um, have been exposed to somebody with COVID nineteen. Those people still need to be in quarantine, even if they've had a negative test. The other type of testing that we have, which is shown on the right-hand side of that flyer, is the antibody test or a serology test. And this detects antibodies made by the body's immune system in response to the infection with the virus that causes COVID nineteen. This is, pr- provides information about a person's past exposure to the virus. Um, it is not used to diagnose somebody who has a current infection, um, and it does not detect presence of the virus itself. Um, like the viral test, this does not test for human genetic material. It only tests for antibodies, um, that are made in response to the infection. The antibody testing can be processed in the hospitals or clinics on Navajo Nation. Uh, some of them have that capacity, or they can be sent to outside labs. When we do a, an antibody test, a positive result means that the person very likely had a COVID nineteen infection in the past. But it's unknown right now what the presence of those antibodies will mean. It will mean that that person's protected from the virus going forward, or how long that protection might last. So, we still have quite a bit to learn about how to interpret the results of the antibody test. A negative test means that, uh, a person very likely has not had a previous COVID nineteen infection. And I think it's really important for, um, everybody to understand, obviously, that a, a negative test right now tells us nothing about the person's infectious state or risk of, of transmitting, um, tomorrow, or the next day, or the next day. You can have a negative test in the morning and go to a birthday party in the evening and be exposed, um, and that negative will, will then be essentially meaningless. So, we really have to make sure that we're keeping our focus on the other practices that can help keep our workplaces safe, um, and, and our communities safe, by wearing masks and washing hands and keeping distance. The fifth slide in the presentation talks about where, uh, the Testing, uh, Coordination Committee recommends that testing be done. And the primary, um, emphasis is on doing testing and collaboration with the local IHS or six thirty-eight facilities as much as possible. This is the existing primary care, public health infrastructure that we should utilize, um, because it will help us ensure that we have rapid case notification when results come in, um, and case management, that we can call those individuals, give them the results, ensure that isolation is happening quickly, um, and that we can do the contact tracing and quarantine. We also need to make sure, and, and by doing this with our existing local facilities, we can ensure that there is proper education being provided at the time of testing. If there are outside entities that want to partner to support testing on Navajo Nation, they're required to notify the Testing Coordination Team at that, uh, address shown there. And this is really so that we can help ensure that all of the systems are in place, that they're using good quality tests, that they have systems in place, uh, to do rapid notification and contact tracing, and to make sure that the, um, activities are really done in a coordinated manner. Um, testing, we want to try to come to a point where testing can be available seven days a week and accessible within forty-five minutes of residences across Navajo Nation. Um, and that mobile outreach testing can be useful in underserved areas and areas that are seeing increases in disease, um, so-called hotspots. And I think everybody is probably familiar with the number of mobile outreach, uh, testing events that have been conducted recently, um, across Navajo Nation. And those are continuing to be scheduled throughout, um, July and August. Um, I mentioned already, um, when we were, viewed the flyer, the different types of tests available on Navajo Nation, the Abbott ID Now, and the Sechia Gene Expert BioFire, I didn't mention previously. This is a, an expensive test that tests for lots of different, uh, respiratory infections. Um, and will be something that's probably come, becomes useful in the fall and winter as we start to see circulation of other viruses as well. And then we also can use the reference laboratories. In the Testing Strategy Document, um, which has been approved by the Health Command Operations Center, and, and I will ha- happy, be happy to circulate to this group, um, after the call, and we have outlined, uh, priority levels for who should be tested based on the amount of testing supplies that are available. Um, so you can see the first four categories on this slide, which are symptomatic individuals, um, should be tested even if supply levels are low, meaning that we have fewer than ten thousand, um, tests available per month on Navajo Nation. When we have moderate level supplies, ten to twenty thousand tests available, we can test all the way through, uh, Categories one through six, so all symptomatic people. When we have supply levels that are good, we can test Categories one through seven. So, that includes asymptomatic people who've had close contact with a case. And when we have excellent supply levels, we can test all the way through, uh, Category eight, which is, um, all asymptomatic individuals. Essentially, anybody who wants a test should be offered a test. And that's our current, um, state right now. We have excellent supply levels here on Navajo Nation, thanks in large part to advocacy on, on the part of the Department of Health and, and, um, tribal leadership to ensure that, um, tests are available. So, he- right now, um, testing should be available to all, um, people who seek testing, um, at, at facilities. And you can see that on Slide eight, where we've summarized that the testing supply levels are excellent and sites should be testing symptomatic and asymptomatic people who are seeking, uh, testing. That concludes the slides on the Testing Strategy, um, and I can take questions on that now or, uh, pass it over to Dell, um, for Dell to present on the gating measures.
Committee members, do you have any questions, uh, to Dr. Hammett?
I, I got a quick question, uh, Chair.
Go ahead, Honorable Halona.
Um, so, uh, on the antibody testing, um, has there been a lot of people that come in and have gotten antibody testing on the reservation? Or is that, is that, uh, a limited number, and it's not very, very much, uh, that testing has not been used very much?
Thank you for that question, Honorable Halona. Um, you are correct that that, that testing is not being used, um, widely on Navajo Nation at this point. Um, we are working, the Testing Coordination Team and the Navajo Epidemiology Center, um, are working on a, a protocol that would do, uh, the antibody testing and a sample of people across Navajo Nation in order to understand, um, how much transmission of the virus there has been. Um, but because we don't yet understand well how to interpret those results, um, if somebody tested positive, we could say, we could say con- with confidence that meant that they had been exposed in the past, but we couldn't tell them that that would protect them going forward. They would still need to adhere to the same recommendations to try and prevent, um, the spread of COVID. So, right now, because it's not useful as a diagnostic test, or as a predictor of whether or not you're at risk for COVID, um, that testing is not being done widely. Um, it is available in, um, four of the IHS and, and tribally operated facilities. And so, there are, um, some uses of it in, in complicated clinical cases, um, where people are trying to understand, you know, what, what the cause of illness may be. Um, that testing can be performed, but it's not something that's being made available, um, you know, in general to the public at this point.
Okay, thank you for that, uh, and, and that was my next question, and how, uh, what kind of, uh, results will you be getting out of it? So, I guess, you, you will just have to wait and see as we go farther on down the road there to see if there would be any benefit for us to look at those numbers. Uh, thank you very much, that, that's all I have for right now.
Committee members, do you have any questions further? Up to Dr. Hammett? Um, if not, then I'm gonna open the floor to Brother Honorable Oto So.
Thank you very much.
Chair, can I ask you a question? This is, oh, sorry.
Thank you, uh, Chairman. Or, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead, Slater.
Yes, Honorable Slater, first.
I don't want to ask a question quite yet, I want to hear Delegate So's first. But who, who is the next presenter, and what is their, what's the content of their presentation? So, I know whether, or where to ask this question.
Honorable, uh, Vice Chair, Slater, I'm the next presenter, this is-
This is Dell. I was going to say, if I can do my presentation, and we have questions, and we can do questions at the end. Oh, I'm presenting on the gating, the gating measures.
Okay, thank you.
Let me get to Otto So first.
Okay.
Okay, this is to say, we know that the virus is out there and with the antibody testing and so forth. Number one is that, why isn't it the antibody testing not really thought on the Navajo reservation to determine whether somebody may have had it previously or so forth, you know, just so that we have that information? And that would help the medical community in some way. The other is that we know that it's midsummer now, and we have the second season of the, or the flu season coming up again. You know, usually when the flu season comes, you know, it usually comes with allergies and so forth, and the pollination falling from the flowers and plants and so forth. And I guess with those similarities of the sickness, are they being, is both avenues, both testing for both sides, whether it's the regular flu or Corona? You know, are they looking at the two? Because like I said, like I was, for me personally, midsummer, it was in March, beginning of March, usually that's when I usually get, normally, you know, I'll catch a cold. And this is due to the fact of the air changing and the atmosphere changing. But it wasn't, it's just the normal, just the, this normal here and there with the cough that I usually get, that I noticed, you know? And, but I assume that, and there's a common cold, and then there's the, there's the issue with the COVID. How is that being separated, I guess, at the health level? Because, at the health field level, because I'm sort of thinking now that everybody who is just coughing, they may just be saying, hey, you may have, you may have COVID, you know? But it's good that they're getting tested, but I'm hoping that they're not labeling everybody that has a cold, all COVID, COVID-related. That is my question there. Thank you.
Dr. Hammett, and then after that, we'll go to Ms. Giazi.
Thank you very much for the question. I think those were two important questions. The first one about antibody testing, and why isn't that being done more regularly? I think the answer to that is really that we do want to make that testing more available, and we are intending to actually do, to roll out some testing across Navajo Nation to understand, as you said, you know, how much spread of COVID there has been across Navajo Nation. It's not something that, right now, that we know will influence somebody's clinical care. And for that reason, it was decided that this was best done as part of a study that we went through the Navajo IRB in order to get approval for that serology or that antibody testing study. And in that way, we'll hopefully be able to learn about what the positive and negative results mean, and be able to then offer those a little bit more widely to people in a way that can help them understand their risk. So I expect that that will happen over the next couple of months, that we'll, you know, be able to do more widespread testing across Navajo Nation, and then that it will become more available routinely in clinical practice. Your question about flu and the overlap between flu and coronavirus is one that keeps, I think, most of the infectious disease doctors and any of the providers up at night, because we know that flu season is really, you know, just around the corner now. We'll usually start to see cases in October, November. So we definitely want to be prepared for that. I think it will be really important that flu vaccine, as much as we can do to promote flu vaccination, to prevent, you know, to prevent as many cases of flu as we can will be important. And then when people do come in with symptoms, they will need to be tested for both influenza, for the flu, and for coronavirus, so that we can understand, you know, what's happening. Influenza, there are treatments that are, while there are a couple of main differences, right? There's vaccines available to help prevent it, and there are treatments that are available. So it is going to be important for us to know if somebody does have influenza, and to be able to do that testing. And that is something that the clinics are preparing for currently to make sure that they have enough testing supplies on hand to be able to offer that.
Thank you. Mr. Deliazi.
Oh, yeah, Nana, Chair So, and members of the committee. I'm going to start with page nine on the handout, the COVID-19 gating measures. Uh, shanet leh, um, kol jis, and heh ol jis, uh, Navajo Nation. Uh, heh tala, and dos nich, uh, hat no. So these are the three areas of measures that we're looking at based on data. Uh, data collective. Arro, you, your partners, khol no, eh, bish ndej nish, CDC, ay, eh, ye, eh, bish ndej nish, ay, eh. Ye, eh, bish eh, da, hozin, arro, el kana, do, na khe, do, na khe, jini, do. Not all, uh, on a rotating, rotating basis, na, mo, aden. Uh, ni kha, na, tja, ka, ka, shahon, shi, ndar, nisho. Uh, di, uh, o, ta, ha, da, di, ya. According to the measures, uh, Navajo Nation, and dos nich, uh, based on data. What does the data look like? According, I'll go over it just very briefly. The yellow, the yellow one, egi, jo, first one, egi, cases, to make sure there's a downward trajectory or trend on COVID-19 cases. Jai, eh, data, then, all for, within the previous 14 days. And then the speed of the epidemic needs to be slowing consistently as measured by the doubling time. Arro, na, hun, eh, ye, yai, testing. So, Dr. Hammett, yao, is not testing. The test, the proportion of tests that are positive has to be decreasing over the previous 14 days. Ya, jo, di, di, da, da, is kamp. Um, that's the timeframe. Arro, if there's enough testing available, and such that 20% or fewer of all COVID cases or tests are positive or greater or equal to 14 days. Arro, the third one, egi, hun, eh, gai, uh, hospital capacity. Capacity to treat all patients without crisis care. They, uh, ICU beds, they have to be 80%, less than 80% full for seven days, and sufficient supplies of PPEs greater than four days. Jai, wata, uh, ka, has, on, um, bed, bed, nis. Arro, the next page, egi, yai, this is, was updated yesterday. Number one, ri, jo, eh, cases, ya. Is there a 14-day downward trajectory? Ash yahon nich, over the 14-day, previous 14 days. Do, kona, eh, the vertical axis, ya, left side, you gave the number of cases. They lay zero to 150, ka. Arro, eh, horizontal axis, eh, that's the date of the test. It starts from March all the way to July 3rd, last Friday. And we have the data up to date. Um, out of the blue lines, the right side, two, two lines, uh, eh, it represents 14 days. This is all Navajo Nation cases, excluding border towns, a ko. As you can see, within that two blue lines, so yahot era, there's a rebound, eh, niya, there's a, it went up again, and now it's going down again. So really, the definition, CDC, uh, the guidance, siki, it has to be continually going down for 14 days. Of course, deh, hot, zaga, rebound, even now, there's the ka. There is no 14-day downward trajectory, eh, shang, o, da. Out of the next page, egi, uh, it shows, uh, by service units, ya. Ko, we have eight service units shown here. They, on the left side, it says, two of the eight service areas meant the gating criterion for cases, 14-day decrease without rebound. Jai, green, egi, ya, jai, Crown Point and Gala. If you look at that line, it's going down continuously. So even now, they're, they're green, and they could, you know, technically, we can maybe consider, you know, entering Phase One of the reopening. Akunde, jo, yahot, egi, six of the eight service eh. Four cases. Jai, you see yellow and red, ya, Chinli, Kianta, Fortifyan, Trip Rock, Tubus City, and Winslow Service Areas. If you just simply look at the trend line, so yahot era, there's, there's a rebound. Some are still going up, but even, um, they're not ready yet. So, eh, she, eh, she, yaj, ne. Of course, there's only two that's, that's green. The rest eh, so yellow in the, there's, uh, ay, ya, bah, they're not, they're not really ready yet. So, eh, di, uh, slider, wata, yaj, ne. Arro, the next page, egi. Um, in comparison to, we're comparing our neighboring states. Eh, uh, eh, the, the data, eh, nis, on. So there's Arizona, Colorado, and then Mexico and Utah. Arro, at the bottom, eh, uh, Navajo Nation. If you look at the four states that surround us, and that they're going up in, in COVID cases in the past 30 days. Of course, eh, sto, jo, con, consideration of that, ya, jo, hinao, the neighboring states, uh, Arizona, she, ya. And then they're always in, they're still in the news, so there's a surge of COVID cases in Arizona, eh, especially down in Phoenix, uh, Southern Arizona. Ah, there's a, an increase in cases, a ko. Then, he, the na, they, they travel off the red, the nation, and then some come and visit families. They live in Phoenix, and they come, and there's that movement of interaction um, that could, you know, he, da, da, na. There's movement, a ko. Eh, eh, ah, and hinao, state, si, gi, jo, ha, ta, red, ya. There, if you see that line, they're going up. Under, so Navajo Nation, he, he, eh, ay, do, if you look at that last piece of line, it's going down. Akunde, it's not really sustained. So, even now, so, abah, s, here, let's, uh, be careful and be cautious to consider reopening Navajo Nation, at least to Phase One. Jai, di, wata, uh, uh, pa, slide, egi, yaj, ne. Arro, page 13, egi, eh, hospital capacity. Jai, so it's part of the gating measure. Um, eh, ze, eh, eh, um, ah, do, nix, eh, COVID-19. He, he, the na, uh, hospital beds, as, the bah, no. Jo, ko, if you see that dotted line, it's at 80%, ya. It's going, it's going across the graph. The recommendation from CDC is you have to be below 80% hospital capacity. So if you see this graph, the black line, egi, it's, it's all under 80%. So it's good that we are under 80% on Navajo Nation. There's the blue line, the blue bar, egi, 638 hospitals. The red line, egi, um, regular IHS federal hospitals. Ako, the, uh, we're below 80%, a ko. Um, that's good, akunde, jo, hinao, the neighboring states, they're trending upward. Ako, and he, the na, they're not. Uh, we transfer a lot of our people who have COVID-19 to, down to Phoenix, Albuquerque, and other areas for high-level specialty care. So if these surrounding states are trending upwards, they might not have, you know, enough room or beds for our people to be treated. So even though we're under 80%, um, eh, sto, eh, she, ah, ka, bah, no, sendo, eh, chui. Di, wata, yaj, ne. Arro, the next page, 14, egi, this is for Arizona. This is from, uh, this is actually today, um, updated to today, July 8th. You see the, the red, the red part of the graph? It's all the way up to 90% full. Ako, um, jo, Nana, he, the na, that some of them, we get, they get transferred to, um, metropolitan areas, a ko. Um, rule, eh, gi, da, so, la, bah, has, on, uh, abah, s, here, so, ha, jola. Um, ha, jo, uh, high specialty care, eh, uh, bah, do, nix, eh, gi. Jai, eh, eh, uh, abah, s, here, so, Arizona is at 90% full as far as hospital capacity. Out of the next page, egi, just to, just another, just reminder. These are the three areas we're looking at currently, like cases, testing, and hospital capacity. Out of the next page, egi, just my, our last slide, conclusion. John, eh, March, adan, bah, he, khe. Uh, the very first case, arro, ka, kon, he, khol, jis, kada, five months. Ay, si, ye, eh, bish, nisho, ah, he, che. Um, Health Command Center, our partners from IHS and CDC, FEMA, Army National Guard, uh, volunteers, uh, that. Un, za, h, shi, bish, nisho, we're doing better than, than before. Ako, let's keep it that way, hat no. Ako, let's, with the testing and the cases and the hospital capacity, you know, let's really look at that before we even consider reopening at Phase One. Ay, si, ay, oh, let's, bah, khe, do, let's remain cautious. Jo, jo, um, jo, on, um, as, sa, hat no. Ako, um, jai, eh, eh, I don't have cases decreased since the peak. Yes, May 15th, shen, it, uh, we peaked, middle of May. Ako, we're going down, so we're rebounding and then going up, rebound, going down. Of course, not, uh, ako, abah, s, here. Ako, did the Navajo Nation experience rebound in the last 14 days? Jai, yes, ya. Joe, yes, yeah. Um, out of, out of, everything surrounding us, all the states surrounding us are surging and will, uh, impact our ability to reopen safely. He, um, he, he, um, I, uh, Chair, uh, so and Vice Chair Slater. This is, uh, just a real quick, brief presentation on testing and gating measures, um, that we're looking at and sharing with Navajo Nation leadership and, uh, Dr. Jim and, uh, Ramona, all our partners, uh, with us. Um, of course, I would, um, do you think, uh, presentation, though?
Sheila, Mr. Yazi, um, committee members. This is Delegate Slater, I have a question.
Go ahead, uh, Cecile, Honorable Vice Chair Slater.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Um, I, I, it's great to hear all of the inputs that are used to make these determinations. And I feel that the more that this information is conveyed to the council and the general public, that it, it will, it will strengthen the response just in people's minds. You know, um, and I'm not able to get on every town hall that the president has and all that stuff. But, you know, I think everyone here needs a platform to express how, how you're doing your jobs and give some assurance to our people and especially to our employees and those who work within the government and have to say, hey, how do I know that my leadership is really making the best decisions for me? Who are the experts that they're consulting on? What is the data and why is this decision being made? Whether it's reopening the government or reopening the, um, the nation to a certain extent. So first, thank you for your work. Second, um, I think we need to explore ways to help get this sort of information out there. Um, maybe it's something where you have a, a worksheet, not a worksheet, but some talking points or, uh, a graphic or things like that, that delegates can help distribute to their chapters. And that might be something you want to consider instead of something that is just way, like, very, very high level and for general distribution. Um, my first question is, how is the Department of Health analyzing the various, either public health orders or quote unquote, like relief efforts and responses? It seems to me that we've had enough distributions, um, of essential supplies and food, other items to maybe just anecdotally or some, I don't know what, maybe it wouldn't be super rigorous, but have an understanding of how effective they are in combating COVID and its spread in our communities. Um, us as leaders, I, I struggle to think through what data points we should use to make these decisions and, not, not what, what, what data points do we have available to us? And whether it's really even meaningful. And I, I guess if you could elaborate on what sort of analysis can you feasibly provide? And then if it's not being done presently, can you explain why or why not? Um, just so we all know what we can and can't ask for, you know? Is it even reasonable to ask for that sort of, that sort of data, you know? Did it make an impact in Round Rock to have distributions every week or twice a week for X number of weeks? Or is there an analysis based off of the distribution of wraparound services, resources? You know, okay, in these chapters, in these regions, or within this particular program, we've been able to get all of these resources to ensure that people are staying in their homes. There's no reason for them or their family members to travel out. Things like that. Um, I know that we asked that as a committee, you know, really, how do we increase the wraparound support services and scale them up several months ago? And just kind of received an assurance that it would proceed. And as I've been monitoring the HCOC reports, it really does seem like those efforts have scaled up. But, um, it's very difficult, I know, for the programs to write a comprehensive report, you know, every single day, every week. That's, that's not, that's not necessary. But how is your data going in and forming those wraparound support services? And then how is it making its way up to the decision makers? You know, there really is ultimately, I guess, one decision maker and that's the president in this instance. And then in terms of that analysis, what are the meaningful methods of analysis or points we should be looking at? What can or can't you do in a statistically meaningful way? And what could we expand to have a better hold on where Navajo is right now? Thank you.
Dr. Hammett or Mr. Yazi?
Um, Chair So, this is Dr. Jim, can I respond?
Dr. Jill Jim.
Okay, it's, uh, Honorable Slater for the, for that question. I think there's, um, several areas that we're looking at and regarding your question on analyzing responses regarding the approaches and, um, there is several arms to the entire response that, um, that we're looking at in COVID nineteen impacts, um, individuals that are not, um, do not have COVID nineteen or that do. And then we have healthcare systems that are part of this entire structure. And the way I look at COVID nineteen is it has hit every portion of how we function every single day. And there are resources that we've received, um, donations that we received that you were talking about and the humanitarian branch of the COVID nineteen. Um, that branch in itself, um, mainly supported, um, non-COVID families by doing food distributions. I guess the intent of that is to support families to stay at home and shelter in place, um, as a mitigation so they don't, um, go to town and expose themselves if there is no need to, that they have, um, at least food access, um, available for them. So, um, that's one strategy is by distributing food to high-risk individuals or families in need. Uh, basically, that's one approach where you would say is hopefully through distribution of food, there was, um, that we saw little movement or mobility by providing that. But then addition to the public health orders are also another indication of measuring the impact of the COVID nineteen. And those public health orders, um, put, um, policies or not policies, like recommendations in place for individuals to practice preventive measures and also, um, not only at home or being out in the community. And then also restricting, um, businesses to operate that would, um, seem to be unhealthy where we wouldn't want to, um, have full dining available for some areas just because that dining, um, is really an increased risk of, um, getting someone infected because there isn't, um, a lot of room for social distancing factors. So when I think of COVID nineteen in general, um, there's also the impact of, um, the federal assistance that we have received, um, so far. So there's public health orders, there's the food distributions that I think are somewhat continuing. But otherwise, the, the healthcare facilities, the wraparound services that you're talking about, the alternate care sites, obviously, um, we had challenges and struggles with getting patients in there, um, fitting the eligibility criteria. And I think that one of the main goals of that is that we look at the isolation areas with more of a success, um, rather than the alternate care sites. Because the way our healthcare system is structured, um, the hospital beds were not completely filling out because there was a lot of medical staffing, um, that was coming into the nation as volunteers to assist the, um, hospital, um, end of staffing to help them, relieve them or whatnot. So the healthcare system was somewhat, um, seemed to be at its worst in May, as I recall. But as things are moving downward, um, there seems to be some, um, reflection that we're doing right now as you're suggesting. And, um, and those are related to indicating that the healing kits and isolation kits that, um, under case management, they're using that as, using that as a way to help people isolate at home. And then, and also we have the motel that we have individuals isolate as. So, uh, I think that part of those measures are just to basically make sure that we identify individuals to make sure they get assistance that they need, um, but it's not available in all areas. And the reason is that we use the data from epidemiology to look at trending where at the beginning of the, um, pandemic, there was a lot of numbers in Kianta and Tubus City. And to date, and then as those, um, numbers started going on a downward trend at some point, then we saw a large number of cases in, um, Chinli and Winslow and also Shiprock. And then at one point, Gallup was before that. So the way the disease moves across the Navajo Nation is really unpredictable. And, and I know that what we learned from this pandemic is our people are very mobile, um, very mobile to the extent where, um, issuing out a public health order for one community really might not be relevant because, um, at some point, these individuals, um, are, have the ability to just go across the Navajo Nation in one day and back. And so I think that what we're learning about, um, our own relatives and family members have been very interesting. And so I think when you think about measures of impact, um, a lot of things we look at is, um, the availability of the resources regarding COVID nineteen at one point. And then there's the non-COVID nineteen approaches. And the group is working on, um, preparing materials, um, using, um, existing data to do modeling projections as you're, as you're, as we're looking for. Um, this pandemic has not ended, but we can use our own data to at least predict as much as we can future waves. And then also, um, do a analysis that we have enough data to go backwards. Are there are recovery numbers that you're seeing as one measure to look at, um, individuals who are safely recovering? But there are a lot of, um, unknown about this disease that we're, that we're, all of us across the United States are not prepared for, such as the post effects of, um, COVID nineteen. There are family members that are families, um, or individuals that are still experiencing COVID nineteen differently. And some have, have to go through rehab, um, starting back from eating, um, basic physical therapy, um, having the ability and enough energy to walk and do all of this. And it's, um, I think it's, that's something that we are starting to look into. Also, the mental health part of the response as well. But I think, um, as far as measuring and all of these things, there are certain, um, reports that still need to be developed regarding, um, just the policy impacts and also, um, the availability of resources that we had at the time. And going forward, um, obviously, we're going to have to measure, um, the CARES Act funding that are, that have been approved to figure out the effectiveness of further, um, filling those gaps to prepare for future waves so that we can better understand, um, the needs. Because a lot of those justifications that were, um, supporting the ability to address COVID nineteen really relate to the basic, the basic needs of individuals that we don't have, um, water access in some areas, electricity or either basic, um, PPE or even, um, the intent of keeping high-risk people at home to, um, have, um, having people be, um, not mobilizing and moving. Um, so to answer your question with all of that, I think it kind of went all over the place. But I think the approaches are all basic CDC community mitigation strategies that we've been using around addressing isolation, quarantine, um, case management, contact tracing, testing, um, epidemiology, community mitigation and preparing for reopening. Um, as you guys saw in your handout under the, the slide two, I think it shows the, the entire COVID nineteen , um, branch without, um, the other sections, um, the main sections of the incident command structure is, um, social services is involved with us as well in helping and responding to families as well. And also we work with law enforcement, um, as another branch. And then obviously the humanitarian branch is working on non-COVID families. So, um, there is a large recovery effort after this pandemic and a lot of reports that will analyze and we will have to report to the feds, um, obviously, um, what we learned and what will need to happen. And that will be an expectation of the command center as a formal report, um, at the end of the pandemic. So, thank you very much.
Chair, I have some follow-up.
Go ahead, uh, Honorable Vice Chair, follow-up question.
So in terms of the nation's response, the president requested meal kits as a part of, uh, I think it was one-one-six hyphen twenty. And what I'm hearing is that there really isn't maybe data to substantiate those continued distributions. But maybe the theory stands and the theory is, you know, we're just trying to get as many people as possible, get as much material support to as many people as possible to prevent them having to procure those things in social situations, which seems totally fine and I think that is legitimate. But, um, you know, us as policymakers, we have to balance that between, say, water line extensions or power extend, power line extensions. Has there been any analysis based off of the prevalence within certain communities for a correlation between, um, water, you know, domestic water use, domestic water availability, um, or other factors like that? Um, everyone and their brother citing how, you know, we're just these poor, dirty Navajos. And oh, God, we need all this food and all this other stuff to help us survive. Um, I'm not convinced that, you know, a food box is necessarily saved someone's life, but it just has highlighted the food insecurity we have here on the nation. But we're also highlighting this point of thirty percent of our homes, at least, you know, don't have running water. Is that a factor in what you're seeing? I mean, just speak anecdotally, I guess we don't need data, but unless there is data to support that. Um, I, I don't want us to be misrepresenting ourselves and lying and trying to whatever, because that's kind of what we're, we're moving right now. Is that if there's this December thirtieth deadline for the funding, it is absolutely necessary to get running water to every home irrespective of whether COVID is here or not. And our argument to whoever those funders may be needs to be consistent and honest. So I'm just curious to hear right now, anecdotally, are you seeing, you know, communities that have high rates of no running water access for domestic water use having increased COVID rates? Or is it a situation where maybe symptoms are more severe in certain communities as opposed to others because of running water? Or is that affecting just the response in terms of isolation and the alternative care sites? And I'm gonna have another follow-up question on the ICS, ACS situation too.
Um, thank you, Honorable, um, Vice for that question. So the water, there is a water group, um, that's working with, um, with different tribal programs, BCD, the Health Command, and they usually call that the CDC, um, Wash Team. There's the third team coming in and the first team did an assessment, um, of their water access issues. And there is some preliminary findings that the communities that had less access to water do show, um, at least some, um, higher COVID nineteen cases. So, um, my recommendation. So, um, my recommendation, Chair, um, and Vice Chair is to see if you could invite the Wash Team and the people that were involved in that assessment to do a presentation to the he- Thank you.
Committee members, I'd ask, uh, Honorable Slater, follow-up questions?
So that water team is integrated with CDC. So presumably they're looking at, at that data and then it would be forwarded back to you or whoever else would analyze that, that department. So I guess I would, would hope that there'd be a little more communication so you'd feel comfortable providing an answer on that, um, now, but we can invite them back. We did hear this morning that Department of Water Resources has not been invited to whatever the planning team has been for the expense, for the expenditures of the CARES Act funds related to water resources. So that's very concerning because they're the experts and that's who we've been consulting with on council to identify how to move these water projects forward. Um, and I know that's outside the realm of the Department of Health, but, um, they really need to be at the table and have a lot of important historical information, or, or context. In terms of the alternative care sites and the isolation sites, can you explain some of the difficulties that you've confronted in assigning people or getting them to take advantage of the ACSs? Can you talk about the cost of an ACS either on an annual or weekly or monthly basis? And what the president's position is presently on the continuation of the ACSs? Um, and then moving forward, you're talking about isolation. Is that isolation support or those new isolation sites? Um, can you elaborate on that? Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair for those, yes, thank you Chair and Vice Chair for the, uh, Vice Chair for the questions. Um, the alternate care sites, um, some of the challenges that we're having, um, when the ACS first opened, um, basically we received a lot of federal support to, um, start up the, the ACS sites. And, um, those expired and we actually don't have funds to operate them. We need, um, funds that we will be advocating, I think is where there will be getting support from, um, the re, the remaining balance of the CARES Act funds. Um, there was a budget that was submitted, um, typically to run an ACS site. It's about around $4.7 million a month for the facilities that we have. Um, in isolation and that capacity would be about $2.7 million a month. That will include the entire walk-around services. So, um, my understanding is that we just, the challenge basically is that we need access to funding, which we currently don't have, um, under the command center, um, to support, um, isolation and quarantine for patients in general. And then as far as, um, the, the tribal leadership on the executive side, um, there is continual support of both keeping the ACS and isolation, um, available and open. And so I don't know if I answered, didn't answer one question, but that would be my response.
So with respect to the ACS versus ICS, what sort of cost benefit analysis is being performed within the HDOC for continuing these sites in comparison to each other? And then in comparison to other methods the nation could take to combat COVID?
Yeah, thank you, sir. The option for, um, the option that we're currently as a backup that we use is, um, individuals would be isolating at home using our healing kits and also the motel. And those are only for people that have, um, are not, um, that don't need hospitalization, but will need, um, basic wellness checks. But, um, the cost benefit analysis is basically, um, our, the ACS are on warm status and that will still be a cost to the nation, um, when it's on warm status, meaning it's ready to be, um, go back up in 48 hours if our healthcare system decides to fold. And that's what we're preparing for right now is that the neighboring states have increases, increasing cases. And as Dell had reported that we have in Arizona, close to 90% of their ICU beds are full, which will, which means that none of our facilities, which they're commonly doing is transferring patients to outside facilities for specialty care and, and support. So the nation, if this happens, if we start seeing increases in cases by two days or three days, that we would need to activate those alternate care sites with, um, a confirmed vendor and contractor in order to make those available. So that's the, the plan that we have to have. If we don't have an ACS site option for the nation, um, we will definitely, um, be in a position where we are not going to be able to provide care to our own people and also having the inability to provide or to, to transfer externally. So this pandemic is not going anywhere. So we don't know when the surges will hit again, especially fall is coming again right now with the increase in the pneumonia cases and possible increases in COVID-19. So there's always need to be assurance that we, the nation has the quick response and ability to operate within 48 hours of a surge. And the isolation is basically, um, also another, um, protection of, of our patients that we have across the nation and putting those, um, isolations into a, um, instead of an ACS, we'll be using it as an isolation area just so that we can, um, get more patients. And right now we're doing okay as we're deciding on the isolation. But the benefit to that is as you're, as we're coming across the monsoon season and also other factors, obviously a tent, um, a healing kit outside a home might not be conducive for some patients. And also the heat that's going to be, um, increasing. So we would need to possibly have a indoor isolation option for patients rather than, um, distributing a healing kit to, um, individuals. It's really not a cost benefit. It's basically the ability to provide isolation and quarantine for individuals that need to be, um, separated from individuals so they don't infect other individuals. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jim. So I guess, I, I'm trying to understand how that would fit in because say we have, we presently have rights, the overwhelming of the healthcare systems of some of our adjacent states. These ICSs, I mean, sorry, the, the alternative care sites, would they be appropriate? And could they help scale up to provide the higher levels of care that our citizens wouldn't be able to access in the referred care? Or would it be moving patients from the hospitals to the ICSs under a new set of standards? Um, I, I guess I'm trying to understand the, the full value and what the plan would be because my worry is if we see no opportunity to refer patients out or no ability to do that, and we have a bunch of folks here who will then not go to ICSs, and then we have people who need to receive higher levels of care, who can't receive it at ACS, you know, would it have been better to spend them, to have spent the money on something else? Or on something that people are using, like maybe these isolation units or something like that? Dr. Jim?
Thank you, uh, yeah, thank you Chair and Vice Chair. Um, so for the alternate care sites, basically it, it intakes low acute, um, patients that are that tier two. You're talking about higher level care at tier three or four, and we do not, um, have the capacity with our current, um, structure to do higher level of care. The reason why there's an ACS is to relieve some beds, um, from the facilities if a surge does happen for patients that don't need, um, a high level of care so that, um, so we are able to open beds and move those patients over so that higher risk patients can be hospitalized.
So it, it's, it's the OC view right now that it's critical to keep all the ICSs going in some sort of status so they can be activated within 48 hours to help relieve the beds within our system so higher level care can be performed there. And that would be slightly different than what we have right now where we've been requesting people to go to the ICSs. Is that correct? Because right now, are those people occupying hospital beds or are they just going home?
Right now they're occupying, um, hospital beds because the bed capacity are not full because we don't have a lot of beds. And so if people need to be isolated, they either go to the motels in Gallup, um, Farmington, working with New Mexico on that side, and also Chin Lee. And those are people that need to be, um, isolated. And so there are still options. Um, and then patients that need that tier one, tier two support are able to be hospitalized because they're, um, we are seeing a decrease in cases. Yeah.
Thank you, Dr. Jim.
Committee members, questions? If not, uh, I guess, uh, um, the ACS at Shiprock Alternative and then the one at the Wildcat Den in Chin Lee, they're basically shut down. Am I correct?
Um, Vice Chair, um, no, they're not shut down. They're basically on warm status. Like I said, uh, right now there are volunteers are at the hospitals and we're trying to prepare, um, to figure out the cost of the, the ACS. And we also, um, are trying to figure out a way to get access to the CARES Act funding so we can, um, pursue an isolation. So they're not really shut down. They are not taking patients right now, but they're, um, basically do have some voluntary supplies are still there and readily available. We just need to figure out how to get, um, funding available to the command centers so we can, um, turn those into an isolation.
Well, I guess that really puzzles me because the council had been receiving reports that, uh, the ACS are in the process of being shut down, that the, um, supplies were being sent back to the Wellness Center in Windaroc. So, um, now I'm wondering who's got the right information? Okay, that didn't get a, an answer. So, uh, Dr. Hammett, I've got a question.
Oh, sorry. Oh, Chair, so sorry about that.
In that regard, then, uh, Dr. Hammett, in that regard, then, um, the data that you're, you've basically, um, ascertained, that's science data. Then how do we use that to effect, uh, social change?
Honorable Chair, thank you for that question. Um, I think the data that, you know, data can be a powerful tool if it can be, um, communicated effectively. And I think some of the data that, um, Dell shared, um, as was suggested, um, by the committee earlier, it'd be helpful, you know, to be able to present that in a way, um, that the community can understand, you know, the reasons for, um, the decisions that are being made. Navajo Nation has done a fantastic job of flattening the curve, um, better than everywhere else around us where we're seeing these upticks in disease. Um, but we can't control our neighbors, obviously. And so that's really having to drive some of the decisions, um, that are being made. Um, so I do think that, you know, we, we can communicate the, you know, the public health data in a way that can affect social change. Um, we, Dell and the team at the Epidemiology Center are doing a great job analyzing the data that, um, are available. And we hope to be able to look more closely to see how the different interventions may be working. It can be difficult to do that because so many things are happening all at the same time. So it's very difficult to disentangle the effects of all of these different measures, um, that are, that are being put in place. Um, but we certainly know from the science that, you know, it is important to wear masks and that it is important to keep distance and, and those will help to slow the spread. Um, so if we can communicate that and, and continue to get people to buy into those really important public health measures, we will be able to hopefully support reopening in a way, um, that minimizes upticks in disease.
Okay, then, then the other part is this committee has oversight over education. And we have, uh, within the public school system, um, different, uh, approaches. And then of course we have the Tribal Control Schools and Bureau of Indian Education Schools. I guess my main concern right now is, and, and kind of, uh, uh, Honorable, uh, Ode, so referred to it. In the fall, when the young students go back to school, usually, um, someone shows up with a cold. And within a week, all the students in let's say K6 have a cold. My real concern is how to basically, um, guard, like, and possibly, um, put in measures that would, uh, safeguard the students from a pandemic within their age group. And what is your thoughts on that? What, what, uh, on the data that the Epidemiology Center has right now in the K to, let's say, or the zero to 20, there's quite a number. And there's, uh, and depending on whose report you hear, there, there's, uh, increasing number of, um, um, deaths within that age group. And that really for me, uh, concerns me. What is John Hudson's university's, um, recommendations?
Thank you, Honorable Chair. I wish I had, um, an easy answer to that question. Unfortunately, there just aren't easy answers. And I think that school districts across the country are grappling with this same challenge right now. How do we safely, um, get kids back to school? We know that they need education. We know that for many kids, this is an important, um, place where they have social support, um, where they have nutritional support, um, and not to mention obviously educational needs being met. And so I think everybody can agree on, you know, the, the common goal to be able to reopen schools in some form or fashion, um, so long as we can do it in a way that is as safe as possible. But you're exactly right, you know, the classrooms in the wintertime are a, a dorm factory. Uh, and anybody with kids or grandkids knows that then those, you know, come home and into the households. And that's what we really have to avoid in this situation, given how severe of a disease, you know, that COVID is and, and how significantly it's affecting, um, elders and others and a, across the age groups. I think what we want to do, um, we've got, you know, a, a fair amount of data that are coming in right now. Um, because of the expanded testing and contact tracing that's been put Um, because of the expanded testing and contact tracing that's been put in place, um, and the increased availability of tests that has been available just really over the past month or so, there has been a little bit more testing in kids, um, and we need to be able to see those data, a- a- analyze those data to understand, um, how much of a risk we think that, you know, transmission in the schools will pose. And then I think just as, you know, just as people are talking about how to safely reopen workplaces, those same types of, uh, policies can be put in place and developed for reopening schools. And I'm sure that that's something that Doty is, um, working on in terms of how we can ensure, um, uh, adequate distancing in the schools, um, perhaps staggered schedules, um, adequate, uh, cleaning, um, perhaps some sort of role for, for screening testing among teachers or some other, you know, groups of employees. Um, I don't think we have an answer to that right now, but I think it is something that absolutely, you know, we've got some data that will help us make those decisions. Um, and I know that there are people who are, you know, putting a lot of time and energy into thinking about how, how schools can be opened safely. And it will be something, as with everything with this pandemic, that we probably learn as we go. Um, that we need to, you know, have systems in place to be monitoring conditions on the ground in real time so we can pivot if we need to, if what we've done, you know, doesn't seem to be working, or if what we've done seems to be working and we can sort of expand on it.
Okay, th- then, uh, the other part, there was, uh, also the, the various tests that, the nasal swab versus the swab in the esophageal area. And there was the question of accuracy. What has the university found with respect to which is the one to be used more often than not?
Thank you, Honorable Chair. I think this is something that we're also still currently, um, learning day by day. We know that the nasal pharyngeal swab is, um, for sure, a good quality specimen, assuming that it can be collected properly. Sometimes that does require training for the, the people who are collecting that swab, um, insert the swab, um, to the, you know, to the back of the nose and throat, um, which can cause some, you know, temporary discomfort. Um, but to, that, that swab, we certainly know gives a high quality specimen. Uh, the CDC has also, um, authorized the use of nasal swabs, um, that aren't inserted quite as far back. Um, that has slightly less, um, ability to detect the virus, but it's not a meaningful reduction. Um, and those are, both of those types of specimens are approved by the CDC for use for detection of this virus. The third type of specimen, um, that can be used is a saliva specimen, and that's the one that we're still learning a little bit more about. Um, the data right now suggests that the saliva specimen is as good or better than a nasal pharyngeal specimen in people who are symptomatic, people who are currently sick, um, either as outpatient or people who are admitted to the hospital. That saliva specimen, we really seem to be able to detect a good amount of virus in that specimen. Where it's a little bit less clear is if that specimen will work as well for people who are asymptomatic. Um, I think the preliminary data that we have suggests that that will be a good sample. Um, and that is something that is important to, you know, to take into consideration because it's much easier to collect and it doesn't require as much training for the people who are collecting this swab, this specimen, and it doesn't require as much PPE. So it would be helpful if, you know, we're able to, uh, accept that as a specimen. But currently, that's not one of the specimens that's recommended, um, by CDC for the viral, um, diagnostic testing. Right now, it's just the, the nasal swab or the nasal pharyngeal swab.
Okay, um, I guess the other part going, uh, um, you know, we have, uh, basically, um, policemen equipped with instruments where there's a test for alcohol in the breath. You think that down the road, um, there will be, well, I guess, the aspect of artificial intelligence being able to, um, develop a instrument that could give an instant, um, test result.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. That's a terrific question. Um, I think that that's a wave off, um, if that were to happen. We don't currently have, um, with the exception of, like you said, the breath test for alcohol content, um, which is a, a chemical measure. Um, there's also, when people have a, a bacteria called H. pylori, um, Helicobacter pylori that causes, um, stomach ulcers, that can actually be detected, uh, through a breath test as well, but because of very unique properties of that bacteria, we don't have any of those types of tests for viruses. Um, but we do have tests that can give fairly rapid results. So I, I don't necessarily anticipate that we'll have a breath test for this, but I do think, um, that we can expect that there will be advances in the diagnostic testing technology, um, that will make us have, you know, better access to point of care rapid testing. Um, but that will be a wave off.
Okay, uh, Dr. Hammett, I guess the, the other aspect, we had a report from the Metals Research, uh, group out of UNM. And there, what they presented basically was, uh, a graph that showed curfews, the weekend shutdowns, and, um, the numbers after those specific, uh, shutdowns and curfews. The, is your group basically also, uh, graphing that type of, uh, reaction? By the people in regard to, um, higher cases of positive? Or higher cases of hospitalizations? And perhaps that's also a question to Mr. Dell Yazi.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Yes, I will, uh, thank you, Honorable Chair. I will let, um, Dell Yazi answer that question about the, um, the work that the Navajo Epidemiology Center is doing around that.
Thank you, uh, Chair, Honorable Chair So for that question. Um, I have never, I haven't seen that graph that you're talking about. Um, but as far as, you know, policy impact, I think it was asked earlier as well. The impact of curfews, weekend shutdowns, um, you know, the, that, the impact of that, um, related to COVID cases. Um, we do have a, a group, um, who is looking at the, the surge model that a number of our partners are working on, including one of my own colleagues at our Navajo Epidemiology Center, Deidra Gray Eyes is leading that group. And she's working with a number of people to look at, um, the policy impacts, uh, um, with regards to a number of executive orders that have come from OPVP. Um, I, I don't, I haven't seen any from the, from the, that work group. I haven't seen any data that they have shown, but I know they are working on it, um, Chair So, so, um, they are also, I think Dr. Hammett might be able to speak to this, is they, one of the group members is working with, and she's also from Johns Hopkins, with the White Mountain Apache Tribe, in, in looking at this type of information. So, um, there, her name is Jessica Atwell, Dr. Atwell, um, taking that, you know, using, uh, some of the indicators from that model to be used for Navajo Nation. So that's, um, a work group that's working on it, uh, Chair So, so maybe hopefully here within the next week or so, they'll be able to show us some of the, that type of information. Um, maybe at the, um, maybe in another meeting, we could also maybe, uh, provide some of that information, or we can, as the Epidemiology, uh, team, we can also, when the data becomes available, we can, we can share that as well, um, Chair So, thank you.
Okay, um, let me also now give the floor to Honorable Nathaniel Brown for question. Silla Nathaniel Brown, are you? The floor is yours to, to pose the question to the group?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I can't, Shana, uh, Chairman So, uh, Vice Chair, Health and Education, Human Services. I'd like to thank you for this report to, um, this COVID nineteen report on the Navajo Nation. What I'm really interested in is, um, to all the experts, um, how many different strands, um, of this novel coronavirus has been detected since, um, it started? And I know it's novel, so well, how many more strands will this maybe morph into, um, in the future? And possibly right now, I see some of our people, um, working directly with hospitals and, and, or the, or the different organizations here in my community. Um, I see some of our people, um, when they are positive, and there's different variations of how they're affected. Um, the symptoms are different. Some don't get any, some mild, some really severe, some unfortunately dead. And once they come back home and they're negative, unfortunately, some, in, in Western where I live, we don't have any of those facilities where they can, um, I guess, take refuge away from their families and, um, to quarantine away from their families. Even our Navajo Nation police officers and EMTs have asked me in Kansas, um, we want to quarantine somewhere away from our family because we know it's on us. And one little bug, we don't want to take it home. But anyways, uh, my, my question is, how many strands are detected? Are there, and possibly, do you think that coronavirus was here on the nation even before these test kits were created? I'm asking this question when I meet with our, uh, criminal investigators, um, like, um, you know, being a delegate, we get a lot of privileged information, even from families from our communities that tell us, "Hullah Hashitza," the, the ologist, and it wasn't a heart attack or anything, but it was something that had to do with respiratory. Um, and then looking forward into the future, how can we, how can leadership really utilize these dollars e- effi- effectively to prepare to combat? And I feel like, um, I, I hear that, you know, here on Navajo, COVID is flattening. Um, but I don't quite see that. Um, but, but I'm, 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 I'm glad that I will be wrong on that, and I hope I am. But, um, with the state of Arizona being the number one of COVID positive cases now, and Navajo per capita was, was way ahead. And that's really scary for, for us here on the Navajo Nation, going forward and winter coming, uh, fall and winter coming. What is this gonna look like? How, how are we, how would you recommend for Navajo leadership to start preparing? Well, obviously, to me, well, are weekend lockdowns really helping? I, I, I get reports from so many people from all over the nation, not just from my area, but they're reporting to me, oh, we, there's people still driving around, there's still people partying, there's still people, um, shopping. Um, so my last question would be, uh, well, actually, two more questions. My other question would be, um, are, is there any antibody testing that's going on in the Navajo Nation? Um, have you found any? And what does that look like? I think instead of using antibodies from other previous Corona positive patients that are non-Navajo, that they're fusing into Navajo patients, it seems like some of the times that's not working. I don't know if our DNA has something that's so unique that will be more, be more of a medicine for the healing part of our people who are in the hospitals who are fighting for their lives. And the other thing would be, I, I know I did impose this question. I wanted to drop a legislation and I came to the Incident Command Post in Winderock a few months ago. And my question then was, is a two-week or one-month lockdown, will that flatten the curve even more, especially approaching fall and winter? Um, we need to get our numbers down or even down to zero. Um, I'm worried about how the winter, because this novel coronavirus loves the cold and it, it thrives in the cold. Um, so, but even in the heat in Phoenix, we're still seeing such a surge, um, in, in positive cases. And a lot of our relatives are coming back from Phoenix and Flagstaff. And I see this, and I think we all see this, um, that individuals there are not wearing, um, as simple as face masks. I, uh, the way I see this is face mask and keeping a hand sanitizer is very effective. That's what I'm learning. So those are, uh, my questions. Thank you, um, Chair. Yeah?
Dr. Hammett or Mr. Yazi?
Thank you, thank you, Honorable Brown and, 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 um, Honorable Chair. I think, uh, this is Dr. Hammett and I'm happy to, um, attempt to answer some of those questions and then pass it over to colleagues at the, um, Navajo EpiCenter and Department of Health. And there were a number of really great questions there, and I'm not sure that we, uh, like, everything with this pandemic, we're still trying to figure out a lot of the answers. Um, you asked about whether the virus was here before, um, and I think that, you know, so far, there is evidence that there may have been circulation of the virus sooner than, you know, we saw the test positivity. Um, but there isn't any evidence for, you know, sort of any substantial circulation in people in the United States really prior to early 2020. And so, um, I think the first case that was detected on Navajo Nation was in, on, on March seventeenth. Um, was there perhaps some circulation prior to that? Um, we could absolutely speculate that there might have been, but it was probably not a significant amount of circulation. Um, given that, you know, it, it does cause a fairly, um, you know, unique presentation of disease. Um, you asked a question about the number of strains, and I think this is, um, something that has been perhaps misconstrued in the media. Um, whenever a virus infects a person, that virus starts to replicate itself in that person. That's how it infects all of the different cells, um, and makes us sick. Um, and it does this by duplicating its genes. Um, but the virus is, it, it does this in a very sloppy manner, and there are errors, um, in that duplication process that, that pop up all the time. Um, and they, those are sort of a, a very normal part of viral replication. Um, in this pandemic, we've, you know, had a lot more attention paid to this virus than, you know, any other virus for a very long time. So we're looking very, very, very carefully at all of these little tiny differences that may- So we're looking very, very, very carefully at all of these little tiny differences that may, uh, pop up as the virus replicates itself. Um, to date, there's no evidence that there are, um, sort of multiple lineages um or, or strains, as we would think, where there are really sort of distinct, um, strains of the virus. Uh, recently, there was, there was one, uh, new strain that was, was postulated, but this is certainly a case where, where there's maybe, you know, two or three, um, strains that may be circulating. They're not, you know, thirty or forty, uh, strains that are circulating. Um, and it is still under investigation, I think, whether, uh, any of the, the new strain that has just recently been detected is potentially, um, more transmissible, but, meaning that it's more contagious, it spreads more easily, um, but perhaps, um, causes less fatality. Um, but that's, you know, very new and speculative data that we'll have to monitor over, over time. Um, the short answer to the question is that there are, um, a very small number of, of strains of this novel coronavirus, um, that are circulating on the order of, of one to two to three. Um, you asked a question about, uh, antibody testing and if that is happening on, on Navajo Nation, and, and it is happening, um, to some extent. Um, we don't know, we do know if you get an antibody test and you're positive, that means that you've had, uh, the coronavirus infection, you've been infected with, with this virus. Um, but we don't know what the presence of those antibodies mean in terms of whether you're going to be protected from getting re-infected, or if you get, if you do get re-infected, whether you'll be protected, um, from having more severe disease, or, um, how long those antibodies may last. Um, whenever we, you know, whenever we get infected with something, our body makes antibodies. Um, our immune system responds, it makes antibodies, it tries to fight off that infection. Um, but just for the same reason that you can get, you know, the common cold every year, we know that the antibodies that you mount aren't necessarily going to last forever or protect you, um, against reinfection. So, for that reason, the antibody testing is really helpful, I think, and it is something that we're trying to push forward to be able to get a better sense, a more complete sense of how much transmission there has been on Navajo Nation. It will, it will definitely help us answer that question. Um, but there's enough uncertainty about the interpretation of the results, um, that we can't use it yet to help us know whether people will remain, uh, will, will be protected or for how long that will be. So it's not currently used, um, as part of clinical practice, just because we don't necessarily know how to advise people about the results of those tests. Um, it's not used to, i- i- it's not a diagnostic test, it's just used to say whether or not you, you had been exposed to it in the past. So, um, right now, it's used in fairly limited capacity on Navajo Nation until we learn more. Um, you asked a question about how should Navajo Nation be, uh, preparing? I think, you know, particularly with winter, fall and winter around the corner. Um, and I think there are a few key things that can be done. And you mentioned, obviously, the fact that, you know, what's happening in the states around us is really important and does influence what happens here on Navajo Nation. I think we have to just continue to get the message out that this virus is not going away. So yes, if you shut down for a month, you will flatten the curve. And Navajo Nation already, you know, did that, like, there, there were curfews in place, there was mask-wearing restrictions in place, there were physical distancing, uh, restrictions in place, there were prohibitions against gatherings. Those are the things that flatten the curve here on Navajo Nation. I think the challenge is to help people, that people have to understand that when you stop doing those things, cases will start to uptick again, because the virus hasn't gone away. It's still here in low levels, and when we, and when we let up on those, um, on the, all of those steps, all of those measures that we've been taking to slow the spread, the virus will just reemerge. And so that's what you've seen actually happening in Florida and Arizona and, uh, Texas and all these places, where they just, you know, a- as you said, you go out places and people aren't wearing masks, people aren't distancing, that's how the virus spreads. Um, so what Ha- Navajo Nation has to do is to, is to get to a point where people understand that this virus is gonna be with us for a while, and these changes that we're making, we have to be able to do it in a way that's sustainable. We have to be able to just get on board with the fact that we're gonna be wearing masks, we need to do physical distancing, we're not gonna be able to ha- gather, uh, in the ways that, you know, that we want to and that we're, that we used to. We're gonna have to think of new ways, um, to, you know, remain connected with our, with our culture, with our traditions, with our family, um, so that we can avoid having, you know, a, a, another peak of spread. So I think that's a really important thing, is just those communication messages that Navajo Nation can be, um, you know, leadership can be on board with it, people can just sort of say like, this is, this is gonna be with us for a while, and that, that these are the things that we need to do, and making sure that there are policies in place so that, um, you know, you can, that, that enforceable policies that are in place that will help to slow the spread, and that when people do have symptoms, that we've, you know, can offer anybody who needs it testing, whether they have symptoms or not, it, you know, testing is widely available. And that we have contact tracing, um, mechanisms in place, and, and Department of Health and Navajo Epicenter are working so hard right now to get that contact tracing system up and running. Uh, and then the supported isolation and quarantine so that people, you know, don't have to go out and about and potentially risk, um, transmitting to others. I think those are all important steps to prepare. And I, I'm sure that, um, Dr. Jim and, um, and Dell and others, um, on the line will have other answers to Honorable Brown's really excellent questions.
Chair, um, yeah, uh, Chair So and, um, my brother, uh, Hon- uh, Honorable Brown. I just wanted to make a comment, um, thank you, Dr. Hammett. It is, um, on a, kind of a large, uh, with regards to preparedness in the future for, you know, another outbreak, um, how do we be better prepared for that? You know, I think we've learned a lot with, uh, this, uh, COVID response activities that we're doing. You know, as, coming from the Navo Epidemiology Center, we are, you know, a staff of eight, eight staff members. And to build that capacity to respond to an outbreak as large as COVID, you know, we need, um, people with skill sets as, such as, you know, um, medical doctors, um, epidemiologists, uh, public health advisors, um, people who are communication experts, you know, with, to be held, you know, to, within our own Navo Department of Health, within our Navo Epidemiology Center, to build that capacity so that we can respond to such events. Um, so, currently, we're very limited in these types of, uh, resources with people who have, um, higher skill set, uh, to help us with responding to such an outbreak as, uh, COVID. And, um, as you know, uh, we, you know, data is very important. And how do we, at the infrastructure level, the collection of information, um, the Navo Department of Health, or even at the Navajo Nation level, collecting information that helps us, you know, drive, um, decision-making, that we are informed of how, what decisions that need to be made. So I think we really need to build up our Navo Epidemiology Center. I could be, um, maybe I'm a little biased because I work for Navo Epidemiology Center. But we are very, uh, limited. We have to, you know, we're currently working with CDC, who are bringing all these high-level, you know, experts, and they're bringing, uh, expertise to help us, you know, uh, develop some of these, um, products that you are, that you all are asking about. So how do we build that capacity here on Navajo to do such things on our own? Is, uh, I think a larger, a larger, um, picture, I think we all need to look at, um, with our Navajo Nation leaders. Um, and our Navo Epidemiology Center, we, we don't get any funding from the Navajo Nation government. All of our funding is external, and we write grants to CDC and NIH, and, you know, with our partners such as Johns Hopkins, with Dr. Hammett, and other academic institutions to, to, um, secure funding through, uh, through grants. And that's how we operate at the Navo Epicenter. Um, I think it would be nice to, um, have some other funding from the, from the nation. You know, we have, I hear that we have, uh, over six hundred million dollars that the nation is giving for, for COVID. Is that, could that, could, can we think maybe a piece of that to build up our Navo Epicenter? To staff it, and also even testing? You know, from the beginning, we were very, um, limited in, you know, PPEs. Testing was limited, there were no tests available to test people who wanted to be tested. And then even we had issues with isolating folks and quarantining folks. And so there was a lot of resources that were limited, and, um, even our own communication systems with our partners was, you know, somewhat limited with, you know, with, on the IXS side and the Navajo Nation side. And then with our partners at the state level. Um, but we now, currently, we've gotten to know one another very well, and we are working together very efficiently currently. But all that has, had to be, you know, um, created over time, so, um, and so I think there are a number of things that we all need to consider and think about and, and work on to be better prepared for going forward. Um, is my, my, my comment, um, uh, Brother, uh, Delegate Brown, thank you.
This is Ramona, I'd also like to make an additional comment to, uh, my colleague's comments. And, uh, thank you, Honorable Brown, for the question, and that is, regarding the, uh, capacity of the Navo Epidemiology Center, it's really about the reliability to our partners to access data. The Epidemiology Center doesn't have a server that allows for feed-in, um, to populate, um, information from both the federal facilities as well as the tribal health organizations. Um, so it, it's very, uh, much a challenge when we are asked, what is your, um, current numbers, or what is your, the current status on any, any illness other than, um, COVID nineteen, in addition to COVID nineteen? Um, we just don't have access. And that would be one of the, um, strengths that we'd like to build on. And, um, just wanted to bring that to the attention as well as what we are knowing as public health authorities here on the nation, um, according to the Affordable Care Act and the, um, uh, Indian Healthcare Improvement Act, we're recognized as that authority. And at the national level, there is, um, twelve tribal epidemiology centers that we are sister programs with. And just to say that, um, we're always advocating for access to data linkages directly. And, um, anyway, I, I don't wanna go into that more than just to voice that as well. Um, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, uh, committee members, any further questions? If not, then, uh, the chair is open for a motion to accept the report.
Motion, Halona, accept the report.
Honorable Halona motions, do we have a second?
Paul DeGage, second.
Honorable Paul DeGage, second, uh, any further discussion? Okay, let me, let me just, uh, Dr. Hammett, I guess you've been in, um, Chip Rock many years. It seems like you're the guide-on post for John Hopson, Hopkins University's presence on the Navajo Nation. Don't know if my assumption is correct, but, uh, thank you for, uh, being the, um, anchoring post. The other aspect is, uh, we have, um, other, um, area universities, Uni- University of Utah, University of Arizona, ASU, um, MAU, U N M. And they're all, you know, just basically looking at the, um, statistics, whether they be put out by the Health Command Center or press releases. And they're using it, uh, basically to analyze, um, to post some of their, um, analysis. And I guess the, the main thing is, you know, how the, how would Epidemiology Center, as well as the folks from John, John Hopkins University coordinate with these area universities? The other was an earlier statement about the Navajo Nation Human Research Review Board, IRB. Have they been meeting? Um, and then also been in the aspect of, uh, receiving some of these reports? Because it just seems like it's, uh, this whole thing is, is part of an ongoing research. Um, as, as we move along. Uh, that would be something that, uh, I guess, an update on the next report. Um, that would be, uh, questions that I would like to see answers on. Mr. Moes, a roll call vote, please.
Hi, sir, Honorable Paul DeGage Junior.
Green.
Honorable Carl Russell Slater. Honorable Carl Russell Slater. Honorable Purnell Halona.
Green.
Honorable Charlene So. Honorable Charlene So. Honorable Edson J. Winika.
Green.
Honorable Carl Russell Slater. Honorable Charlene So. Chair, we have voted three in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Moes, so let the record show, three in favor, zero opposed, the chair not voting. And as, uh, we would, um, look for follow-up report at the next regular committee meeting, thank you. With that, committee members, we go on to, uh, let's see. I lost my place on the. I lost my place on the... We'll go on to old business, there being none. We go to new business, legislation zero, one four zero dash twenty. Ms. Martinez, could you read the legislation into the record?
Legislation number zero, one, four, zero, dash, two, zero. An action relating to the Health, Education, Human Services Committee, NABQIC Committee and Navajo Nation Council proclaiming third week in June as the next Pride Week on a reoccurring annual basis. Mr. Chair and members, this is going to NABQIC Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, committee members. Questions? Do I hear a motion?
Motion, Paul Begay.
Thank you, Chair. Motion by Honorable Paul Begay. Do I hear a second?
Second, Winika.
Oh, great. Silas, motion and a second. Do I hear questions? If not, then we go straight to a vote. Mr. Leonard Moes, a roll call vote, please.
All right, sir. Honorable Paul Begay Jr.
Green.
Honorable Carl Russell Slater. Honorable Carl Russell Slater. Honorable Purnell Halona.
Green.
Honorable Charlene So. Honorable Charlene So. Honorable Edison J. Winika.
Green.
Honorable Carl Russell Slater. Chair, we have a vote of three in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you, Chair. Let the record show three, a vote of three in favor, zero opposed, the chair not voting. Then we go to item legislation, item seven B, legislation zero, one, four, three, dash, twenty. Do we hear, Ms. Moes, I mean, Ms. Martinez, excuse me. Could you read the proposed action into the record?
Legislation number zero, one, four, three, dash, two, zero. An action relating to the Health, Education, Human Services and NABQIC Committees approving and supporting the selection of the Rehoboth site for the Gallup Indian Medical Center Replacement Project. Mr. Chair and members, this is going to NABQIC Committee.
Committee members. Do I hear a motion?
Um, Chair.
Committee members, do I hear a motion?
Motion, Paul Begay.
Thank you, Chair. Motion by Honorable Paul Begay. Do I hear a second? Committee members. Ball's in your court. A second so that we can start discussions if, so, committee members.
Chair So.
Uh, I need to catch up and then we'll, we'll go to Chair, Mr. Ed Maniazi. Do we hear a, a second?
I'll second that motion and escort it.
Okay, thank you, Honorable Purnell Halona. I'm going to deviate from the rules to allow Honorable Ed Maniazi. I know the committee is concerned because in previous presentations, we've heard that the, uh, the Office of the President and Vice President was looking at an alternative site in Fort Wingate. And we were basically concerned that that would delay the process. So that's the reason I'm going to allow Honorable Ed Maniazi to address the group. And I hope Navajo Area IHS Director, Ms. Rosalind So, is on the call to also give us an update on the processes. Ayla Committee Members, Honorable Ed Maniazi.
Here, Chair So, thank you. And then also to the HESI Committee Members, thank you. Good afternoon. It's good to hear you all on the phone. I just would ask for your support on this legislation, my colleagues. You know, with this COVID-19 that's been going on and my colleagues, this hospital has been in the talks for many, many years. We've been trying to push the hospital to get built. And I know there was a lot of concerns and a lot of questions. And we just couldn't get to the point where, you know, the selection of the location might be app. And in the meantime, you know, Congress has been waiting on us. And the surrounding local governments has been waiting for us. And, and we just haven't determined any site yet. And the old Gallup Hospital, IHS, of course, is very busy, especially now. And majority of our people go there for medical services. I know for Crown Point, when attention is needed, they're being sent to Gallup. And then from Gallup, it's serious, they go on to Albuquerque, our surrounding metropolitan hospital. I'm pleading with you, my colleague, that, 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 that we select a location once and for all so we can get a new hospital. I know I've, I've talked with Rosalind So and I'm hoping she is on the line. But in the legislation package, my colleagues, in the legislation package, there is a survey that was done, there was a study that was done, and that was paid by IHS to select a site. And then there was many sites that were available. In the last council, there was land that was purchased, we thought, for the intention of the new hospital. And the property of 13 acres was bought right across the Mymir School there in Gallup. And, and so, and then the other site was going to be at the Menopases site. And that was going to be within the area of Gallup as well. And then there was talks about location of the same location there where the old hospital is located at. We've been tossing this around for many, many years, my colleagues. We have been talking about it for so many years and yet, you know, it's, it's, what, what else can we say when, when Congress says, you know, where is the location, you all? Where is the location, Navajo Nation? What, what? So we can start funding this hospital. It is much needed. So based on that, there was, there was a survey that was done, a study, if you will, my colleagues. A study that was done by IHS. And the sites that I've mentioned earlier, Rehoboth was selected by the, the, the IHS crew. And they said that there's enough land there, there's enough feasibility there with electric and with the water and with the power line. And it's, it's right off of I-40 where there's the exit. And, and everything is there according to IHS's feasibility study, my colleague. All the study is in writing and is attached to the legislation. And that is why the legislation is drafted up. And so, you know, I know Fort Wingate President Nez and, and the staff had indicated Fort Wingate. But there was a few questions. I've talked to President Nez on few, all, all the time, reminding him, when are we going to choose a site? When are we going to get this done? But, you know, there was some questions that was brought up with the Fort Wingate site, of course, that with the exit, the turnoff, with the on and off with, along with I-40. And then, of course, the power line, then, of course, the water line. And that has a long ways to go. So, so with the study here, my colleagues, and that's what the solid foundation of this legislation is based on, is the Rehoboth site. Now, Chair and Committee Members, I, 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 I'm hoping Ms. So is on. And if, if she is on, she was aware of this, she was, you know, I did talk to her yesterday. She said that she'll be on. And so, Ms. So, are you on the phone, ma'am?
Yes, Delegate Yazi, this is Rosalind. I am on the line.
Okay. Well, I'll give you the rest of the time, our time. Is that okay, Chair, sir?
Uh, yes, go ahead, Rosalind So, go ahead and add to the presentation.
Uh, thank you, Honorable Delegates and Chairman So. I appreciate the time to be able to give an update. So as, as Delegate Yazi has already laid out, this has been in the process for, for several years now. And to clarify, that over 12 sites have been either discussed or evaluated. 10 of those sites have been formally evaluated in the Phase One process. And then, and now we are at Phase Two. There's two, two phases to a site selection. And what's important about where we're at right now is our ability to be able to start moving forward from here, to start planning out their facilities and, and how, what services need to be provided. So all of that needs to be started at this point so we can, we can continue to move forward. In addition to that, IHS currently has $2 million that has been appropriated for the planning of this facility. And so we want to make sure that we stay on schedule for additional resources that, that will be coming forward. And just to let you know, there are four facilities that are on the grandfather priority list for the, for the Indian Health Service, this being one of them. One at Pueblo Plantado, the one that's being built in Belcon, and the one at Botaway Gap. So we're very fortunate to be, to be where we are now. And also, one additional clarification with respect to Mr. Yazi's presentation is that IHS does, did do Phase One, in coordination with the Navajo Nation. There's a planning committee, there's a steering committee that we continue to work with with all of these facilities that are being constructed. They play a valuable role. Those individuals are identified by the, by the nation. It's not, it's not IHS that makes that determination. So there is representatives from the Indian Health Service as well as the Navajo Nation when we talk about evaluation of sites. And, and also, as Delegate Yazi just provided, we are, that, that Rehoboth was rated number one in the last two evaluations that we have been working on. In addition to that, I think what's very important of where we're at right now, this building was built in the mid to late 50s. And so it's a very, very old building. And we know that healthcare changes on, on almost a daily basis. And so therefore, infrastructure changes. And so when we try to go back in our facilities to retrofit programs that, that, so you can imagine bringing forward a building 50 years to what it is that we're trying to do today, not to even mention COVID, it's nearly impossible. And we have ident, we have really seen that in real time as a result of COVID. At GIMC, which is one of the biggest programs within the Indian Health Service, we only have six ICU rooms. And for all the patients, over 300,000 visits that we have per year, that's not enough. It's not even nearly enough. And we're also realizing that with a, with a building like this, to try to even correct or fix electrical issues, HVAC issues, plumbing issues, those kinds of things, it's, you know, we're talking about a million dollars right now. I have, if we were to address the electrical issues right now, right now, today in our facility and the HVAC system to meet NIPA requirements, to have the space that we need, bringing it forward 50 years. And, and also the plumbing and the fixing the elevators, we're looking at $300 million to just make it work as efficiently as we need it right now. So we know that this is, this is not the kind of money that we want to put into this old building. We'd rather see that being put in a new building if we have to. We know also that the emergency departments are, are under space, meaning that we need more space for, for the emergency room capacity. We also have found out through COVID that we need to make sure that our facilities have negative pressure rooms. And, and so when you're dealing with a pandemic, you have negative pressure rooms, which means that all of the air that, that, that we're using now needs to be externally, need to go out. So you have to create negative pressure because positive pressure, that's not what we want because then we're going to be creating spread within our facilities. So even to do that, even to build and making sure that we have negative pressure and also making sure that we have the air, the air ducts that, that will not circ, you know, we have to continue to monitor this facility carefully to make sure that we're not circulating bad air in this facility. And that, that again, is a, is an ongoing daily activity that we are trying to do. So right now, what we've been able to do is that I was able to secure, and I think I provided this in one of my earlier reports, close to $12 million so we can add 16 intensive care pods. And so these will be self-sufficient, these will be facility, a facility that will be in the parking lot. This is another thing that, that GIMC is, we have run out of space. So we're landlocked, we don't have enough parking spaces for our patients. And we don't have enough room just within this facility. And so when you go to, if you drive to GIMC today, it, it looks pretty pathetic in terms of the hodgepodge of, of system that we've had to create, even as a result of COVID. But nonetheless, I think that it's impressive that we're continuing to be able to do what we're, what we can do out of this facility. We constantly have problems, but we're also trying to stay in front of this to make sure that we're providing safe care. But to that, if we look at this in the fall, if we come across COVID again, and, and we will, I, I should say, we, we will be dealing with COVID in the fall and trying to get to even that place, not even 10 years from now or whatever. We need this building built, we need to make sure that, that we do this. But one of the, one of the very important things, and I really appreciate Delegate Yazi's role here, is that for us to start the planning process, remember, there's, there's what we call a PJD, Program Justification Document, and a POR, Program Requirement Document. We have to start those planning activities that will tell us how much space we're looking for, what kind of programs will be built out, what kind of staffing we need, what's the cost going to be on this building. Those need to get started, but we have to know where we're going to be putting this building because we can build up, you know, like we currently have right now in, in the current building, or we can do pods. And so we need to know just what space that we're going to be in to be able to start our planning process. So I'll just, I'll pause there for, um, for just a second for questions. Thank you.
Committee members. Any question?
Chairman?
Uh, Honorable Halona.
Uh, good morning, uh, good afternoon, sorry, uh, hello, Rosalyn, um, and, uh, um, my colleague Edison, or, uh. Somebody's crashing there. So Rosalyn, on the new facility, when you, uh, we're just building just straight to hospital facility, just like the IHS. Have you guys looked at anything to, uh, future building? Uh, because you know, in this area, we really need a cancer research center or cancer center to address all the patients here that, a lot of the people that have the cancer here are having to drive to Albuquerque and to Dallas Phoenix and Black staff to, to get into a good facility, uh, to address this cancer stuff because of the, you know, with all the, all the, uh, uh, uranium mines around here that we've been having a lot of exposure to all our, our people. So, uh, and, and other different, uh, uh, facilities for, uh, recreation or, um, uh, for rehabilitation? Uh, will it be built with the same hospital or have you guys looked down that, the road that far?
Uh, thank you, Delegate Halona. So, uh, with, with respect to any kind of specialty care, we certainly want to make sure that we consider all of those, um, in, in the facility that we're going to have. However, and, and I know that with this committee, I talk about the need for dialysis, cancer and those kinds of things. Then you're, you're talking outside the sort of the, the realm of, of replacement of Gallup Indian Medical Center. Uh, certainly we want to build and, and be able to fund the best, um, the best for the Navajo people, the best in the nation. But I think we'll have to look at those in kind of maybe phases, if you will. We also, uh, truly recognize the need for, for treatment facilities as well. We're not saying that those are not important, I'm just saying that we have to be realistic with the funding that we're, that we, that we want and that we need for, to start the Gallup Indian Medical Center replacement facility.
Okay, I understand, I, I do know, I do know that it needs to be done in stages and there's our extras. But, um, I'm referring to the land. And if we go, uh, with the first phase and build our new hospital, uh, you know, there's, there's not enough, not, not that much land there around the Rehoboth area where we can expand on, uh, to do, uh, extra facilities. The other thing that we would like to try to do is, is on the Navajo Nation is we're trying to bring, uh, uh, VA facility here also. So that, that's, that was when I was trying to make as far as, uh, additions to the, to the land site. If we do that and we don't have enough land there, because obviously it's going to have to come with housing too. Is there, how many housing units would it take that we need to put up for the physicians? In, in the Rehoboth posi, uh, area if we put it there?
Uh, thank you again, um, Mr. Halona, or Delegate Halona. So one of the things that, one of the ways that we can look at this perhaps is looking at the Rehoboth site, um, as, if, if that's the, the site that, that the nation.
Uh, Ms. So? Did someone mute her or she just lose the call?
Hi, sorry, this is Rosalyn, I, I got, um, kicked off for some reason. Um, as I was saying, one of the things that we, we can, we can think about is looking at, um, the Rehoboth facility for, perhaps if, if, if that's the facility, if that location we go with for the hospital and then you'll still have space where the current facility is at. So there's, so you're leveraging, you're almost, you're getting two, two sets of parcel, uh, land, if you will, to be able to consider those other options for where the current facility is on.
Okay, well, as far as the current facility, where, uh, that would be just extra land, we would have to tear all that down and build over it. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, that's kind of, that's way far down the road because right now, you, you know as well as I know that housing facility in Gallup are very limited as well as apartments. And, and in order to keep physicians around, long-term, they need to have decent housing, big enough housing for their families. And so that's, that's what I'm getting at, is that we, we, this, this needs to be thought of long-term with enough room and area so that we can have enough adequate housing, not only for the doctors, but also for the nursing staff and other professions that come along with it. And if we build our facility big enough to where we're going to be able to sustain all of that, there's simply not going to be enough housing within the Gallup area to, to house everybody. And that's why we get a lot of return physicians that come for temporary and then they move on to a different place. So that's just a concern of mine right there. And you know, it's no secret, you and I, we talked about it. I think a better location would be, uh, uh, outside of Gallup. And that would be over there where I was talking about north of Gomerco. There's a lot of land there for a lot of development and a lot of, and there's electricity there, there's gas line that runs through there. And there's plenty of water, water tanks right on top of the hill. And there's also lots of room there to build houses out there and e- expand the facility in the future. Uh, you know, that's, that's still where I'm thinking that I, I would like to see it out there and not in Gallup.
Uh, thank you, uh, go ahead.
The other thing is that, uh, nobody, I don't see anybody taking into consideration too is that across the street, uh, at that Rehoboth location, there's that, uh, gravel pit. When that gravel pit starts making gravel, that brings a lot of dust up. And then right next to that gravel pit, there's a gas refinery and they're always burning off gas there to, a lot of pollution comes out of that refinery. And then you have the railroad tracks there. And when that train goes through that area, all to coming into town, they're always blowing that whistle every hour. And, and I think that's just going to be too much for the patients and everybody in the hospital there to have a, a, a peace and quiet. And this goes on through the night, all night long. So I really don't, really don't believe that that's a good area to be building a hospital. Uh, just for those reasons there. But, um, and that's why I was suggesting that it should be put out there on, in, in China Springs area. On the north side of Gomerco there, there's plenty of room, it's peaceful and quiet. There's a four-lane highway that runs beside the, right, right through there. Uh, and it's just only four, three or four miles outside of Gallup. It's not that far from the other location where the, uh, present location is on top of the hill. So, you know, it, it's just, uh, I'm just thinking about thirty, forty years down the road, well, we'll have enough room to expand if we have to. And, and there's plenty of room out there to build additional housing so that we can have things that are going to stay long-term. So that's, that was my suggestion, Rosalyn, I just wanted to let you know that.
Um, thank you, Delegate Halona, for, for those, I know we, we, you're right, we have had these conversations before. But here's, here's the thing here, I, I think that, um, the sooner the nations, uh, come together and make a decision on a location, um, the, the better off we're going to be. We have, I know some, some, uh, very, a lot of support for GIMC right now, particularly everything that, that I have described earlier for the facility. However, uh, losing or, or not taking advantage of, of leveraging some of the support that we have right now, uh, will impact, uh, or could impact, um, IHS funding moving forward. So, um, I, I don't, you know, I, like I said, I'm, and, and everything that I've read, it looks like we did it in two thousand five in trying to come, two thousand five, in trying to come to a decision on a location. And, um, that's a long time to be, to be coming. So I, I don't know what all the twelve sites were that were looked at. Um, I don't know that, again, we talked before about how IHS plant, facility planning is in terms of you have, um, you know, the, the, where the locations are at, where, where the demographics, where the people are at. Um, you know, when we're trying to leverage, uh, just even to be able to fly somebody out, for example, somebody out to maybe, um, Albuquerque or San Juan or somewhere. Um, we need to be near a place where we can get people out as quickly as possible. Um, so there, there are a lot of factors and I just, uh, I, I cannot, um, say enough that, uh, need to make a decision or, or, or the nation needs to make a decision soon, uh, if, if not now to, to decide how we're going to proceed on Gallup Indian Medical Center.
Thank you, Ms. So, although, thank you, Honorable Halona. I guess the main is, you know, when we come in, um, it's where the cards that were on the table. I know Mr. Halona, Honorable Halona had, um, from day one, tried to change the location, but, um, the federal processes had already looked at Rehoboth and as the number one priority site. And then we have OPVP trying to put it toward Wingate. So, um, on the congressional side, we have, uh, staff, uh, staff, um, people, um, Senator Udall's office. That is basically saying, the Navajo Nation, hurry up and, and, um, select the site, let's get this thing going. Uh, Senator wants to get appropriations for construction before he leaves office. And that's what basically, and I'm glad that, uh, Honorable Ya'Zi has pushed forward because, um, you know, the dilemma with, uh, Fort Wingate, I just saw it taking too long. And I appreciate, um, the, um, aspect of going forward with this legislation rather than to continue to wait. Council will make a decision. The other is, um, as a sidebar, Pueblo Pantado, um, all the evaluations have been done, the site was selected. And the real question, is the Navajo Nation going to six thirty-eight the project or are they going to let IHS build the facility? And the steering committee in, from the five chapters that's on Pueblo Pantado basically wrote to President Nez and said, we've already decided, we've decided a long time ago, we want IHS to build it. And so on June fifth, then President Nez and Lizer signed a letter to say, let IHS build it. So that's in the hopper. Now, we've got Gap Botaway. And so, the group out there has to make a decision so that, that site, uh, the construction can take and go forward. So in the same service area as Tubus City Regional. And, and, you know, the group then needs to also make a decision. And I think that, that's where we're at with that, uh, tree, um, of the gate. And, and the process to go to six thirty-eight for Tubus City, um, there's still some items they will go through to get validated to be, uh, building the six thirty-eight health center. But if the group decides to let IHS build it, I think, uh, again, the health center can, um, in my, in my, uh, thinking, it would be a quicker process. So, uh, those are, like I said, those were the cards on the table when the, this committee convened and we're going forward. It's, it's, uh, just amazing that, you know, with all the IHS construction monies, we currently have three facilities that are funded. And to select a site for the new Gallup Indian Medical Center, then that would, it's, it's quite an accomplishment for the nation. So with A La Committee members, there's no others to answer questions. Uh, the Chair will call for a roll call. Going once, going twice, let's go for the roll call vote.
Honorable Paul DeGuey Jr. Honorable Paul DeGuey Jr.
Honorable Green.
Honorable Carl Russell Slater. Honorable Carl Russell Slater. Honorable Pernell Halona.
Red.
Honorable, would you say red?
Red.
Thank you, sir. Honorable Charlene So. Honorable Charlene So. Honorable Edison J. Winika.
Red.
Chair, we have a vote of one in favor, two opposed.
Okay, let the record show, vote of one in favor, two opposed. Um, the Chair not voting. Regardless of the vote, the equation goes on to the Mount B K U K committee. Committee members, thank you for your vote, uh, Honorable Edmond Ya'Zi, thank you, and.
Chair and committee members, thank you very much. Thank you.
Rashida. Thank you. Uh, so we go on to the next item, Ms. Martinez.
Legislation, legislation number zero, yes. Legislation number zero one five one dash two zero. An action relating to House Education Human Services, Amending Resolution H E H S C A P O five twenty entitled, an action relating to House Education Human Services approving twenty twenty, twenty twenty-four Navajo Nation School Board Apportionment Plan. It's Yakin Residential Hall Incorporated. Mister Chair and members, the committee is the final authority on this, the, the legislation has to be ready to be the record, the resolution part of it, which is three pages.
Go ahead.
Being an act, okay, being an act to section one authority, the House Education Human Services Committee is a standing committee of the Navajo Nation Council, two N M C, section four hundred A. Among various responsibilities, it approves apportionment plan for school boards for youth in elections every four years, eleven, N M C, section eleven. Section two findings, A, on April fifteen, twenty twenty, House Education Human Services approve H E H S C A P O five twenty resolution title, an action relating to House Education and Human Services, approving twenty twenty, twenty twenty-four Navajo Nation School Board Apportionment Plan. Resolution H E H S C A P O five twenty attached here too as exhibit A. See, under the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-four Navajo Nation School Board Apportionment Plan. Generally, schools are consolidated for purposes of being represented by one school. The Tris Yakin Residential Hall is included in the new apportionment plan and, and is combined with schools for purposes of operating under one governing board. schools for purposes of operating under one governing board. C, Is Yacan Residential Hall provides residential services for Holbrook High School students, grades nine through twelve, at large from Navajo Nation and surrounding areas. C, IsYacan.org, it is located in Holbrook, Arizona. Students residing in the residential hall attend Holbrook High School and Bay State Sunday through Friday, and then are bused home weekly. The residential hall is federally funded under PL 10297 through the Bureau of Indian Education. D, the governing board supported by the principal of the Holbrook High School is requisition, is requesting the apportionment plan to be amended to allow residential halls to have its own governing board, not be a part of other consolidated schools. Exhibit B, May 8, 2020, Resolution and Letter of, of Principal. In its resolution requesting amendment, the current governing board states, "Is Yacan Residential Hall Board is comprised of members from the surrounding communities familiar with the students and local cultures which the home living program serves. It states that a plan to include such a residential hall would be detrimental to mission of delivering high-quality experience to students and staff through continued excellence. In support, the principal of Holbrook High School reports above average, above-average graduation rates of native students at the high school and advises against any disruption in the current Is Yacan Residential Hall system. E, due to unique circumstances presented and the interests of fairness, it is in the best interest of the Navajo Nation to amend 2020/2024 Navajo Nation School Board Apportionment Plan." Section 3, amending H E H S C A P O 520, the Housing Human Services Committee of the Navajo Nation Council hereby amends H E H S C A P O 520 as follows. For defines agency 2, Fort Beflint School, five board member, combined with Hunters Point Boarding School, Wydrun's Community School, Kin Da Lochi, Delcott Community School, Green School Community School, Choschka Community School, Overstrike Is Yacan Residential Hall, Winslow Residential Hall, underscore 03, Is Yacan Residential Hall, underscore Navajo Na-, Navajo Nationwide. Exhibit A, Resolution H E H S C A P O 520, Exhibit A, Navajo Nation School Board, School Board Apportionment Plan 6. Exhibit B, public hearing notice. Exhibit B, Holbrook High School letter dated May 6th to Navajo Nation Council from Land, Principal of Holbrook High School Authority. Resolution of the Is Yacan Residential Hall, pages 1 and 2, 3. Memorandum to Honorable M R P B G from Dana Bobb, Office of Legislative Council, dated June 25, 2020. Legislative Branch Internet Public Review Publication Date posted July 2, 2028, 12:00 PM, requesting digital comment. Legislative Branch Internet Public Review Summary First Report posted July 2, 2028, 12:00 PM, five-day conference, 2020. Supporting comments, none. Opposing comments, two. Willie Tracy Jr., Gonado Chapter, and Bene Beelcut School Board Association. Inconclusive comments, none, signed by Melissa Johnson, Office of Legislative Services, July 8, 2020, 8:43 AM. Mister Chair, the legislation's been ready to the record.
Okay, do we have our sponsor? Uh, Honorable Elmer DeGaye. Do we have our sponsor? Um, Ms. Martinez, what's the rule regarding having a sponsor?
Um, it's forward to the next agenda, Mister Chair.
Okay. Meeting members, uh, so we have no sponsor for let the item, uh, seven, then it will go immediately to the next, uh, regular meeting with the Hess Committee. That brings us to there being other legislation, it brings us to close of meeting. And announcements, any announcements?
Uh, Mister Chair, I believe, uh, Patricia Gani's on the line. I'm not sure though. Report one, Miss Stevens.
Okay, Ms. Gani, Dr. Gani?
Yes, sir, and I am not Dr. Gani, but I am here on the line.
Who is? Okay, again, who's on the line? With the update report on reopening schools in the fall.
Um, this is, uh, Patricia Gani, Acting Superintendent of Schools. Uh, I am on the line.
Okay. Uh, we'll go, uh, committee members, the, I stated, uh, they are on the line, we go back and, uh, receive the report. So back up to 5A, um, update report on, uh, reopening, uh, returning schools in the fall. Presenter Gani, Acting Superintendent.
Oh, Yahtzee, uh, Shenanah, uh, Adol, uh, those on the call, uh, thank you very much for the opportunity to share, um, updates, uh, with Hess Committee this afternoon. Um, I was able to provide, um, a more comprehensive report, uh, last week on Thursday, uh, to Hess Committee. And so at that time, uh, I shared with, um, those on the call, uh, the work that was completed by, uh, DODI work groups in developing a guidelines document for schools on Navajo Nation, serving as a resource, uh, to their individual plans for their school reopening. And that document, uh, serves as an appendices to, uh, Navajo Nation. Uh, as we speak, that work group, uh, continues to refine, uh, that document for its release, uh, pretty soon. Um, I have met with, um, other leaderships, uh, including Navajo Nation Board of Education, who at its, uh, July 2nd meeting approved the Navajo Nation Guidelines for School Reopening. In addition to school leaders, uh, here in a few minutes, uh, at 3:00, I will resume meeting, uh, with those school, uh, principals as well. Yesterday, we also had a session with, uh, schools, uh, on Navajo, uh, to get our guidance in their work to develop their plan. And so we continue the work in reaching out to schools. Uh, just today, I sent, uh, letters and email to Arizona Public School Superintendent, uh, letting them know, uh, the position of, uh, Navajo Nation DODI, uh, in supporting the state issued, uh, plans, uh, and to use us as a resource. Um, and tomorrow, I have a, uh, a meeting, uh, to talk with, um, Superintendent of Public Instruction from the state of Arizona, Kathy Hoffman, where I will be able to, uh, represent schools on Navajo with some, uh, challenges, uh, that we are experiencing as a result of the impact of COVID-19, uh, and the schools, uh, were to reopen their, uh, instructional services, uh, for fall semester. So, in my email to Superintendent of Public Schools today, I'm asking for their feedback, uh, so that I may be in a good position to advocate on their behalf, uh, in this meeting with tribal education directors, uh, with the Arizona State Department of Education tomorrow. Um, some of the work, uh, that we have, um, continued to do, uh, since last week's meeting, uh, with Hess Committee, um, we are actively surveying, uh, our school leaders. That survey is coming together today. We will push out those surveys to all school principals across Navajo to get their feedback on where they are in their school plan and to see, uh, if they need any other, uh, additional technical guidance, uh, in their plan. Um, the other, uh, charge, which I will get feedback on, uh, in a few moments here when we, uh, get together with the schools principals, uh, is their work. Uh, they were tasked two weeks ago to survey their parents at their school levels. So we will pretty soon here, uh, share out results, uh, to, uh, get an idea as to, uh, the parents' perspective, uh, in reopening schools. So one thing, uh, remains foremost, uh, we have to respect, um, the, the rapidly changing health information. Um, I was on the line as the health officials shared, uh, information and the work that is happening on that end to continuously monitor, um, the fluidity of the impact of, um, COVID-19 as far as, uh, the spread rate, uh, in our communities. So we also remain in tune to that information, uh, and, uh, we will continue to respect that data. And in addition to that, Navajo Nation President's, uh, executive orders as well. Uh, if we need to, uh, do any extensions, uh, as we know, that is his prerogative, uh, and we are simply providing guidance to our schools to have that preparedness, uh, at this time in the event, um, that we are able to see some positive, uh, decline in, uh, the spread rate of COVID-19, uh, and that we are able to reopen, um, our doors for, for children, uh, for school setting. And so, um, that much I will share in terms of my update. I'm not sure if all who are on the call, uh, were in attendance last Thursday, uh, but at that time, was able to, uh, provide a more comprehensive, um, uh, information about the work that has been done, uh, in developing the guidance for our schools.
Meeting members.
Uh, Chair, uh, So?
Yes, go ahead.
I, yes, I will be happy to continue to join, uh, in future meetings here to continue to provide, uh, any developments as the weeks progress and as we move toward, uh, reopening schools. Uh, so, um, so I can place it in my calendar and I can be available.
Okay. Who is that?
Delegate Halona, I think. Chairman, this is Halona.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, that she would be, uh, uh, giving us a briefing, uh, on a regular basis from here on out until we decide what the deal, what we're really gonna do with the school system. Uh, also, um, um, I'm, I'm interested in finding out what the survey's about that you were talking about, ma'am. Uh, you said you sent out a survey, uh, to all the, the schools? And, uh, are you just trying to find out what the parents think, what the school thinks, or are you trying to figure out what kind of schedule you're gonna try to produce?
Mister Chair, I would like to be able to respond, if I may.
Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, um, Honorable, uh, Halona, uh, for that question. Um, actually, it, uh, both, uh, is the intention of our polling of parents and school administrators. Uh, with this uncertainty, uh, COVID-19, uh, and so, uh, the principals, two weeks ago, yeah, survey your parents. We are working on creating a survey for school principals. Uh, and what guidance do they need? Uh, so that we are able, uh, to determine how we support the schools in their reopening plan. We have to have this information through surveys. And, and so, we will share that out, uh, as well, uh, and, and that really informs our position and the technical guidance that we give to the schools.
Okay, um, the next question I have was, uh, addressing the, uh, boarding school. Some of the schools out there, uh, board the students. There's some schools that they bus the kids to school. Um, what is your thoughts on the boarding school part of the, are we gonna have that?
Well, we, well, I, I, and DODI cannot dictate what those local schools decide. Uh, Winslow, uh, those are some of the border, uh, towns where we have our children stay our residential program. They have that, um, authority and then governance. Uh, according to, a work group, um, those people who work with, um, residential programs, so we are working, uh, through problem solving. Uh, at 3:00, we will be meeting with the principals again, and, um, I will hear from their end, uh, as to what their position is and what, what they are thinking at this time. You see, that's what is gonna dictate, uh, what the ultimate decisions are for these schools.
Okay, I see what you're saying there. And then also, because some of the, uh, other plans that the public schools have been coming up with is possibly, uh, having school on alternate days just to cut down on the amount of students in the classroom, uh, all those kind of decisions, does that work? All those kind of decisions, does that work? Your principals and the schools are going to be deciding and not coming from Dodi?
So, there are options that schools can choose from. Maybe one week in session, face to face, and then the following week. That is a hybrid model. In addition to business learning. A distance learning. A learning package. Complete. And then, of course, the final option is face to face. But I don't think we're quite there yet for any of our schools given the health information that we have right now. Of course, those are the options. A the health. A the school board members, the principals. These schools can send us their plans for our feedback. So, that's how we are offering our technical guidance.
I see, okay. Well, thank you very much for that information. And, you know, like I said, the states have a plan already. And I think they're trying to go for one uniform plan. And I think that might be advisable for us to do that here on the nation too. One of the other things that the state was looking at was that, I don't know, if we have enough money to buy computers for all the students, we can upload all the schoolwork and all the programs on the computers. And so, but the other thing is that they can use the computers to do their work on. The other thing would be online schooling, but there's not enough access for broadband service on the reservation to completely do all that, especially for the higher grade levels. That might be an option for them. But I know that McKinley County Schools is planning on doing downloading all the scholastic activities on the computers so that the students can still take it home and be able to work on the computers at home and do their activities on the computer. And then they can take the computer back to the schools during timeframe and have the information downloaded on it and that's how they would get their grades. I know that is kind of what they're trying to enact here in the McKinley County School System. So, I'm on the New Mexico side of the reservation. So, you know, here in Tohatchi, there's also one boarding school too. So, and that will be left up to the principal as far as what they're going to do with bringing the kids back or not.
Excellent, thank you so very much, Honorable Halona, for that information and the question. It is a weak system that we have. Our IT department is in process with applying for E-rate. A chapter houses. A computers. Library. A preschool age all the way on up to college level. So, we are aware of the digital divide here on Navajo. And we are in process with submitting applications for E-rate so that we have that broadband through fiber optic line connections at the local chapter houses for our students to be able to access instruction.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Patricia Gahn, thank you very much for the presentation. And we'll be looking forward from you again after you get your surveys back to see exactly what direction we're really all going to go in. I appreciate your presentation and thank you.
Thank you, sir, and thank you very much.
Ms. Gahn, I guess terrified. Your, this parental survey, your local school board, privately controlled schools, and they'll conduct the survey. Is that the way you? And, because Mr. Halona, I think, is under the impression that Dodi is going to conduct the survey.
So, two things. We, from Dodi, told the building principals across Navajo that in order to, for them to have best information with parent input for their school reopening plans, survey your parents for deep need, which is what they're sharing out with us today, whatever they found out. Although the other step is that we at Dodi designed a survey, a parent survey. A the principals, which is an email, a survey link. Have them take this survey. So, there's two parent surveys that all parents should see coming to them. One, designed by their school principal and sent out. And there's this other one that is coming through from Navajo Nation Department of Education. So, there's those two. The third type of survey that Dodi is developing and will be sending out A for building principals.
Okay, that clarification. Mr. Halona, Honorable Halona, the surveys will be conducted by the local school boards, the privately controlled school boards. Contract and grant. The other is.
Yes, sir.
The other is when we heard from Utah, the young lady basically said they're conducting their own survey. The same way with the public school districts in Mexico. Each of the school districts are conducting their own survey. And based on that survey, they're either going to do the hybrid model. And there's all kinds of. Initial feedback is the New Mexico Department or Public Education Department published some guidelines. And the hybrid models got to follow those guidelines. Mainly to be a fifty percent attendance. Meaning if they have three hundred students, on any particular day, they'd need to only be serving a hundred and fifty. On a different day, then they would be serving a different hundred and fifty. And anything in between to meet that particular aspect is what the, like Galway, McKinley County, Bloomfield, Cuba Independent Central Consolidated Schools within our area, CBLA. That's what they have to come up with. And again, each local school has to do their own survey. Mr. Halona, Honorable Halona. Committee members, the chair is open for a vote or a motion to accept the report.
Halona, motion to accept the report.
Thank you, Honorable Halona.
I will second chair.
Bishop, Honorable Charlene So, Mr. Mo. I guess other is explore the aspect, right now with the schools, furnished, either, what is it, laptops or the iPads?
So, just to kind of quickly respond to that, Chair So, if I may. Technology funds. Some schools have more developed technology plans where they have these means, laptops and devices for their students. So, nonetheless. We must have these tools for our students because virtual platform of instruction is very much a reality at this time. Of course, those schools would have to reorganize their resources to be able to get those for their students at their school levels. Although, I do know that in the CARES Act funding for the tribal budget, there is an appropriation to affect this digital divide for internet connection. Although, the staff has worked with an organization, Children of Nazili, a nonprofit organization. One of the recording artists. By way of donating some of the gaps for schools and students. So, we are dreaming big. Those gaps that we continue to have at the very source for these devices. We will be obtaining those and placing laptops, Chromebooks, or iPads on the wish listing for our schools. So, those are some of the other projects that we are working on right now.
Okay, thank you. No others, committee members? There are none, then I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Hi, sir, Paul DeGage Jr., Honorable Paul DeGage Jr., Honorable Carl Russell Slater, Honorable Carl Russell Slater, Honorable Pernell Halona.
Halona votes green.
Honorable Charlene So.
Green.
Honorable Edison J. Winika.
Green.
Honorable Paul DeGage Jr., Honorable Carl Russell Slater. Chair, a vote of three in favor, zero opposed.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Ms. Gahn. I was trying to tell you your credentials by calling you doctor.
Thank you so very much and have a great rest of your day.
So, Lucila, let the record show a vote of three in favor, zero opposed. The chair not voting and accepting this report. Committee members. Any announcement, we're at the end of our agenda, any announcements?
Mr. So, this is Crystal Manulito. I just wanted to say thank you for the report also.
Thank you. Good day to Ms. Manulito. Again, I think we basically to schedule a work session between the Board of Education and the Hess Committee at some point in time. Guarding the aspects of. Oh, and then even to, I guess, incorporate. There's some echo, there's feedback. Basically, Ms. Manulito, my concern is that, you know, in the fall when students restart, and it's the young folks, you know, the K-six, that somebody shows up with a cold, within a few days, the whole school at that particular building has got the cold. And how do we best guard against that? I know even the, you know, the fifty percent attend, it'll still it'll still have that effect. How can we best guard against that? For my, that's the disconcern that I've had.
Yes, thank you, Honorable So, for your comments and for all of you guys' comments. And I do agree, I did, we did mention that at our last board meeting last week that we're looking at date to have a work session with Hesse in ourselves. We really wanted to hear the report of our Dodi staff and Acting Superintendent Metzgany, what they've produced and what has come about. But we would really appreciate your opinion and your suggestions. I think it's very vital that we continue the communication, sir. So, I do appreciate everybody that helped in the initiative to try to make this reopening in the fall for our students a lot safer. And I know we won't be a hundred percent, just like what you said. You know, kids get colds and then it goes through the school. And we just really need to have plans in place, even if that does happen. How are we going to react to that and what's going to be in place? And so, I really do agree with you, sir, that we do need to have a work session together and sit down and see how we can come up with other ideas. So, yeah, thank you for that recommendation. We are meeting on Friday again. And I will, we will go ahead and add that to the agenda as stated.
Cue. Committee members, on your own behalf, do we have any announcements?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, when will you sign?
Yes, go ahead. Tomorrow morning, tomorrow morning.
It's, by the time I get there, it's going to be after five.
Okay.
Rather than having Mr. Mo wait, I will try to show up there at eight or eight-thirty.
Okay, Leonard, did you hear that?
Yeah, I'll be here.
I also included Mr. Mo's on, because I have signed some legislation where I'll be the sponsor, signed the ones that we adopted today and to sign the committee reports. And then there. The Hess or the Navi Committee Meeting. And then the other at eleven, Speaker, same, Mark Freeland, Honorable Slater, and myself will be on a teleconference with Human Service Director of New Mexico, Dr. Scrazy, regarding the implementation of the Indian Managed Care Entity. regarding the implementation of the Indian Managed Care Entity. Uh, um. And, and so that a, a full contract to implement that healthcare service um can be signed by Dr. Skracy and the governor. So that's what uh will be happening, um, tomorrow. So that's why I need to, I'll drive in and do that. Committee members, do you have any options or announcements? Okay. Uh, should visit Ms. Charlene? So it was a email from you regarding a Ms., what Ms. Schaefer had brought in, um. Uh, we'll try to put that item on the next agenda.
Okay, she asked.
And, and that way we can um try to also, um, and, and again, um, committee members. Uh, our, our, um, schedule is gonna become really, uh, like complex because the summer session will convene on the twentieth. And we have to get some agenda items to the council. I'd really like to see, um, action to um, support, um, quite force high schools' efforts. Think that's very, um, I guess, uh, brilliant effort. And it's quite dynamic what a school, principal, and the whole high school is trying to do. Um, committee members, um, let's cheer for a action to
Hello, Chair?
Oh, Honorable Halona.
Are we all done with the announcement, sir?
Uh, did you have one?
I need to get off and get on to the uh CPMD call for the uh uh reconciliation for the project.
Oh, um, then motion for adjournment, then?
Motion to adjourn.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Honorable Halona, second by Honorable Charlene So. Uh, hey, Lieutenant Mo, roll call, please.
Honorable Paul DeGage Junior.
Green.
Honorable Carl Russell Slater. Honorable Pernell Halona.
Green.
Honorable Charlene So.
Green.
Honorable Edison J. Winika.
Green.
Honorable Carl Russell Slater.
It sounded like it was a part of the New Mexico
Yeah, a vote of four in favor, zero opposed.
One two, I'm sorry, um, I had a question on the designing engineering.
Thank you, uh, committee members. We have a vote of four in favor, zero opposed, chair not voting. We are adjourned.
So why were we not
Thank you, sir, have a good evening.
Good care.
You too, everybody, take care, have a little safe, be safe.
The organi-